... And Board members, you have before you the agenda that has been submitted to you and reviewed in advance. And the school board, at this time, we would be delighted to entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the October 6, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion for such?
Um, move.
Seconded by Ms. Morrison, seconded by Dr. Carter. Any other questions concerning the agenda? If not, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, and we will now stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What a privilege it is to pledge allegiance to the flag. At this time, we will now go to item C, which is our special presentation. And this word key with the acronyms, keep educating yourself. We're delighted that Dr. Edwards will now bring before us an individual who will continue us in our educational process around relative health dynamics in our community. Dr. Edwards?
Sure. And I am pleased to invite Dr. Gately to join us. He is the Central Virginia Health Director. And as many of you know, there are lots of factors that play into our decisions about return to learn, opening schools, how we manage COVID cases. Many of those are on the health side, which is why I asked Dr. Gately to join us. And many of them are on the educational side, learning loss and concerns about our youngest learners, by the way, which came back today, so happy about that. But I did ask Dr. Gately to join us to sort of share some of the COVID in the community Lynchburg information. There is some information that is on the VDH website to talk about our partnership and how we work together in terms of making decisions when there is a positive COVID case for a staff member or a student, how we work together to do those, and just really to keep us all educated as we're living with COVID in Lynchburg City. So I will turn it over to Dr. Gately for a short presentation, and we'll take any quick questions at the end of his short presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. I'll ask the board's indulgence, for ease of understanding, if you're confident that I could remove my mask while I speak?
Yes, I'm confident.
Thank you. Episode easier to see my screen, too. On March 31st of this year, we had our first case reported in the Central Virginia Health District, of which I am the director. That's Lynchburg and all the counties that are surrounding Lynchburg. As of today, we've had reported 3,589 cases, which have involved 134 major hospitalizations in 43 days. It's been a long six months, nearly seven months now, as we're coming up upon it. Some interesting things have developed in the Central Virginia Health District that are true for us, not necessarily true for the rest of the Commonwealth, or even the districts that are around us. One of those is the age distribution of our cases. A full 25% of those cases that I just described to you are aged 20 to 29. The next largest group is not really terribly close to that, about half of that, and that's age group 50 to 59, followed by 10 to 19. Now, the Commonwealth as a whole has some similar figures, except that there's not merely the stark distribution across the Commonwealth that we see here. Nevertheless, for the Commonwealth as a whole and for us, that 20 to 29 age group is predominant. It's just more predominant here than it is in a lot of other places. I'd like to come this afternoon and bring you some good news, but I can't, as far as our recent trends and what's been happening with the case reports. Unfortunately, in the last week, particularly the last few days of last week and going into the weekend, we broke a record in this district for the number of cases reported in one day, and that was 97. Previous record, and that was last Friday, previous record had been toward the beginning of August, and that was 90. Actually, since the beginning of August, everything was calming down nicely. Everything was coming down, going pretty smooth, little bit of a blip there at the beginning of September, but September, for most of the month, was relatively calm, and we were seeing anywhere from 30 to 35 cases a day during the weekdays. The weekends can fluctuate a little bit just because of the reporting systems that we have. But nevertheless, as I said, in the last, last seven days or so, we've really seen a lot of cases coming through. Question always comes up when you have a big spike like that in one day, is that what we call a reporting artifact or a lab error? And I've investigated that. Unfortunately, it does not appear to be just a bunch of lab reports that got clogged in the system somewhere. It appears that we're actually seeing a legitimate increase in the number of cases. We've analyzed that, our experience last week, from Monday through Friday, for example, and we've discovered in that particular group that 36% of the individuals that were being reported was 184 cases total. 36% were aged 18 to 25. And so, as Dr. Edwards refers to what you end up seeing on the VDH website, and you see on the pandemic metrics site, our numbers are not going to look good. And as a matter of fact, they already don't look good, and our recent experience is not going to help that. I will point out that the, for the increases that we've seen, so much of that has been confined, nearly 60% has been listed as Lynchburg residents, and that's followed by 20% or so that were Bedford County residents. So most of what we're seeing, unfortunately, is linked to Lynchburg City, residents, I should say, in Lynchburg City itself. Today's school metrics, CDC school metrics, the, one of the major things that we're looking at in the CDC metrics is something called the number of new cases per 100,000 population within the last 14 days. Basically, you take the number of cases that have been reported over a 14-day period from today, for example, going backward, you take the number of cases that's been reported, and you normalize that to the population, and that's so that we quote in rates of per 100,000 population. That allows us to be able to compare between more rural areas and more urban areas. And what we're looking at is a rate of 304.4, which is in the red zone at this point. You can see up there that Lynchburg is appearing in the red zone. If you go, if you're able to go above that, you'll see the bars that I'm talking about a little bit more. Yep.
The core indicator.
Yep.
Well, we're saying it's a Lynchburg, so...
There are several different indicators that you have on there. One that's called a core indicator is the rate that I'm talking about. Highest community transmission is considered to be 200 or above. And it says right now, for us, and you'd have to adjust it for Lynchburg City, right now for us, it's 304.4.
Wait, scroll back up for a second, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I don't know who's controlling it and if they're behind the scenes. But, right here, if you can click on this...
That, Lynchburg, right.
... Lynchburg, so we're not looking at...
Yeah, they're doing okay.
Go over one tab, yeah.
Get me undriving from way back here.
Oh, it's... All right, I don't know. All right, see where it's select locality? There you go. Go up.
I'll put it right back once I'm done.
Okay.
While we're looking at that, there are three metrics that are in the core category. One of them is what we're talking about, the 14-day rate. The other ones that we're looking at is the percent of PCR tests, the RNA tests that are positive during 14 days, and that's considerably better for us. In Lynchburg, it's showing at 6.3. That's, that's pretty good. The state's showing 4.9 right now, so that's, that's not terribly bad. There's another metric on here that you'll see, and it is entitled Ability of Schools to Implement Key Mitigation Strategies, and there's not a measurement there. There's not a bar that's going to show up, a colored bar or the number. As you can see, that's the third element down there that's just got words in it. And that's because it's basically up to you, what the, what the meaning of this measure is, what the, the value of that metric is. It is how well you assess yourselves as being able to implement the control measures and the protection measures that are being, that are being recommended. So you can see there, it's, includes things like distancing and masks, all that you're very familiar with, hand hygienes, cleaning, disinfection, so on and so forth. So that's an important metric, but I can't supply you a number with that, only you can do that. There are other metrics that we're looking at that are also not going to be so good as far as a seven-day average, or a seven-day running average in the population, and a seven-day rate that right now is showing at 42.7, down just below that. And again, that's in the red zone. Yep.
Yeah.
So, and you see, other of these measures are not so dire, or at least don't appear to be so dire, because some of these measures, the two that are below there, are what's going on in the hospitals, as far as our hospital capacity and the number of patients, COVID patients, COVID-19 patients that are actually inpatient. So to break that main figure down a little bit more, as I said, if you're taking a 14-day run of cases and you throw in rather bad three days that we had last week, yes, this number is gonna, it's gonna be up, and it's gonna go up. I think the, the challenge for you all is to, and for me as well, is to determine the significance of that number, that figure, and what's going on in the community to what is gonna go on, or what's going on in school. What's going on not only with the students, but going on with your staff as well. And that's why I mentioned before that high percentage of our cases being in the age group 20 to 29, or 18 to 25, in another study that I did. There are a lot of difficulties in determining exactly what's going on, but what I will say, what we've been able to do so far, that's a lot of college students. Now then, once again, what's the significance of that, as far as what's going on, on campuses, college campuses, university campuses in this area, as opposed to what that means for K-12? That's hard to say, except to say, a good, a good proportion of that red, why we're in the red zone, is because of what's going on on campuses. I was on a call earlier today in which our universities and colleges were represented, as well as our K through 12. And, yeah, there's, there's a struggle. We're having a struggle with people in this age group, particularly college students in this age group. Our experience is, has been increasingly, I think, the way one of, one of the students put it was, "I'm just tired of this." And it's just sort of a, a lot of folks on these campuses, they're just saying, "I'm done with this. I mean, I'm never gonna be 21 again. And, so, I'm, I'm, wanna go out, I wanna be with my friends, I wanna have some fun." And since COVID is around, and since the SARS-CoV-2 virus is being readily transmissible, then they're ending up positive. They're ending up as cases, they're ending up in isolation. When we find out about it, they're ending up in quarantine. But you contrast that with, and compare that with, the other figure that I just kind of ran by earlier, and that is the fact that our hospitalization numbers are good. We're not seeing a lot of serious illness in that particular demographic, in that particular age group. Nor actually, based on our experience so far, would we expect to see a lot of serious hospitalizable illness in that age group, because we know the younger folks, with some rare exceptions, do pretty well with their SARS-CoV-2 infections. As you get older, as you add risk factors, we know that by the, by the time, for example, you reach your 80s, you have a significant chance of having a, a poor outcome, being very seriously ill, or perhaps even death in those cases. But that risk goes steadily down as you get younger and younger. So we can have this thing that, that maybe seems counterintuitive, where we have a lot more cases, we have spike in cases, but we're not seeing the spike in morbidity and mortality, we're not seeing a big change in morbidity and mortality that you might think those big numbers would, would go along with. Okay. So that's the numbers. Don't, it, it's very difficult, this is a very complex situation, this is a very complicated system that we're dealing with, and there isn't any way to take one number, as I hope I've demonstrated, and say, "Well, it's okay to open schools," or "It's not okay to open schools." There's so many factors that have to be taken into account. I've tried to explain as best I know right now why that number's in the red. I would not say that because that number's in the red, and may remain in the red for a while, that that means that, "Oh, no, it's no good, we shouldn't be opening schools, we should be going back into lockdown," because I think I know pretty well where the problem is, and the specific problems. And I'm gonna have to be working with some administrators of colleges and universities to see what we can do about that. The other metric that I talked about, that's not really a metric, because it doesn't have a number, talks about your ability to implement mitigation strategies. A lot of times, people want to try to compare and contrast the mitigation strategies. And so what they'll do is they'll say, "Okay, social distancing or masking." And there's not a correct answer to that, because each one of these measures that you undertake is a way of decreasing the odds, or decreasing the risk of transmission of the virus occurring. So best to have good social distancing and masking, and a limited amount of time without those conditions. In other words, don't be face-to-face for very long, try to spread out as much as you can. And so we talk about, can you, in the classroom, for example, or on the bus, can you appropriately social distance the students? Will they maintain social distancing? Good. But then you also talk about the other measures as well, and one of them is, can you reliably expect the students to wear masks? And we're asking some pretty young students to wear a mask, age two, above age two, basically, is the CDC recommendation. I've had three kids myself, and so I know some of the difficulties that are involved. I will tell you this, though, and this is anecdotal, I don't really have a measure on it, it is anecdotal. But in talking with a lot of school administrators, superintendents, principals, and others, not only in this area, but in my other district, which is the West Piedmont Health District, which goes down to Henry Martinsville, Franklin County, and Patrick County, I've heard again and again, principals and superintendents saying how they're surprised how good the kids, how well the kids are adapting to the masks. I wasn't sure to expect that, but that's the feedback that we're getting, that the kids have gotten used to everybody needing to wear masks, and wearing masks going out and around. So maybe it's not an unreasonable expectation anymore, particularly if the children are seeing the adults doing this. Maybe it's not an unreasonable expectation for that. The other issue that you have, and that I've had so far, in consulting with school systems, private and, and public, when they have a case, when they have a case, when you have a case, because that's always the way I start the discussion. You bring schools back in, you bring the kids back in, you will have cases. And so the question then is, how well are you prepared to deal with that situation? How ready are you to deal with that situation? One of the biggest discussions we have to have, or one of the biggest issues that comes up is time. So everybody's familiar with the 15 minutes, and, you know, closer than six feet for 15 minutes, something like that. And, and that's a great starting point, but the reality is, when you're doing an investigation, when you're doing a communicable disease investigation, you can have good social distancing, and you can be masked up, but what if you're in the classroom for six hours? And you have a case in there, you have somebody who is infectious in the classroom for six hours? Well, the tendency is, for each hour, that that situation pretends then, or that it applies, that the risk is going up. How much does it go up? Very difficult, difficult to quantify. We can only qualify it by basically saying, the longer the exposure, even with some distancing and even with some masking, the longer the exposure, the more possible it is that individuals in that room, for example, could have been exposed. It's where the science becomes art, and a lot of those consultations simply involve, okay, how old are the kids, what was the situation in the classroom, what did the teacher say, you know, what's everybody saying about the masking and the distancing? And ultimately, the decision, I think, has to end up being made based on how much risk is acceptable. And that could be with the students, that could be with the teacher and the staff, and also with the parents. I have seen circumstances, or seen situations, in which a child was in a classroom for like half a day, and was found out to be positive. And ultimately, the decision, I think, has to end up being made based on how much risk is acceptable. And that could be with the students, that could be with the, the teacher and the staff, and also with the parents. I have seen circumstances or seen situations in which a child was in a classroom for like half a day and was found out to be positive, was excluded from the classroom, and so we had this decision that we had to make. And that is, what's the level of risk here? What's the level of exposure versus what's the level of risk that people are willing to take? And the parents in that particular case, as well as the, the, the school staff, felt so confident in the measures they had been taking with social distancing and masking and everything else, that they said, "You know, we think that this works, we think that everything that we're doing actually works, and we want our kids to continue in the classroom." So they assessed the risk and they've said, "You know, we think we're willing to take this risk." There may be other situations in which parents or staff or whoever are not willing to, but that's about as good as it's ever gonna get for you, is those kinds of assessments, those kind of situations. I've had other situations in which it was like, student came in the class, nobody was wearing masks, and actually in this situation, a teacher was positive. And in that case, we had to quarantine that class. There were some masking issues and other issues that made me uncomfortable in that situation. But we've done that, I, I've done that several times now. And what I'll say is that I really haven't seen anything I consider to be significant as far as classroom transmission. Where I could look at a case and say, "All right, here's a case, and this kid was in the classroom, and now we've got these other kids." I've not seen that yet in the, in the number of schools and systems that have opened. I've not seen it in the colleges or universities either. We haven't seen in-classroom, in-lab transmission, where the transmission is occurring, when it's occurring, is in residence, in dorms, residence halls, where people are spending a lot of time together, probably not observing social distance and probably not masking and, and those other things. So before I just go on and on, because I've got over, I've got 49,000 emails, literally, 49,000 emails in my Google mailbox at work. I keep them all, I'm compulsive. But there's a lot of material. I've got hundreds and hundreds of medical journals, medical journals, journals and articles and things that I've read, and I could talk a long time. But I'd really rather answer your questions.
Dr. Gately, we really want to thank you for taking time out in response to Dr. Edwards' invitation and, and providing us this rich information. And we're equally grateful to Dr. Edwards for the link to the site where we can find ongoing information, the dashboard that we have, and thank you, Dr. Senha, for the material that was disseminated that you provided. So board members, if there's a question, we would be delighted for you to raise those questions at this time. Dr. Brennan?
Dr. Gately, first of all, thank you and your staff so much for all the work you've done over the last six or seven months. This must have been an amazing situation, and thank you all for your hard work. Just to add a little silver lining to the discussion, the, the, we had that big bump over the weekend, and then Monday, the cases dropped dramatically to four cases, positive cases, and then yesterday we had, today we had reported 20. So we'll see, the time will tell as far as what the real trend is, but the average numbers have actually sort of evened out some.
I tend to be a pessimist, yeah.
The other silver lining, I think, is we talked about the age distribution. Dr. Senya has given us some information on that too, and the good news still is that zero to nine age group is still the smallest number of, of individuals who get infected, with other areas being a lot higher. And then one question is that, the red area that represents the number per hundred thousand that's in the red zone for us, it looks like the criteria is that greater than 200 is puts you in the red zone. Have we been below 200 in a time? It seems like our numbers are generally in the 200 range.
Part of the difficulty I have is, we used to use seven-day for all of these, we would use seven-day running averages. And because CDC was using the 14-day, we switched over to that. But of course, it, that makes it difficult to compare. Now, I had, I could look back to September the 30th, for example, somewhere in there we made this, this shift, and I can kind of compare what's gone on since then, but going back earlier in September, for example, it's, it, it might be possible to do those calculations, but I haven't, I haven't been able to pull all of that out yet. I am not sure where 200 came from. You know, if you look at the scales on there, you, you've got some very tight scales toward the bottom range, 0, 25, 0, 50, going up by 25, 50, or 100, and then, then you get to right above that, some pretty wide range, by, expanding by hun- 100 or so, and then it's 200, just 200 above. I really don't know all the rationale behind the choosing of the scale.
I guess just to clarify my point, I think that unfortunately, our numbers for hosp- for cases have always been in that 200 range, whether it's seven-day or 14-day, it seems that we've been running in that for a long time. So I'm not sure if to get out of that red zone. It's not new, I think, that we're in the red zone.
I, I would say that was true. I, I'm, I'm trying to think back and just do the equivalence of the seven-day accumulative rate and that sort of thing. Now, now you've got me intrigued, I'm gonna have to go see if I can calculate that out. But, but yeah, I mean, Lynchburg, we've always had plenty of cases since we started, pretty much, but yeah, that's the best I can probably do on that without going and, and getting a calculator.
Don't, don't forget those emails, okay? Don't go back to looking.
Dr. Gupta?
So you mentioned 20 to 25 years old is the major subgroup.
18, 25, yes.
So how much, what percentage was asymptomatic? That's my number one. If you give the percentage, congregated long-term care setting, is that your second subgroup or are there other subgroups who lie right behind that?
We're seeing asymptomatic everywhere. We're certainly, and I don't know the percentage in this group, that's something we could probably calculate as we contact those cases and gather that information that's on our questionnaire that we ask when we do case investigation. But I will say that pretty much anywhere we've looked, any circumstance we've looked, e- even the, you know, long-term care facilities, for example, we've always found asymptomatics or minimally symptomatics. But most of my experience has been with the long-term care facilities, assisted facilities and others. And we're doing point prevalence surveys in those facilities. In other words, we're testing all the staff and we're testing all the, the patients in that situation. And pretty well always, we will find sometimes a significant number of unsuspected cases, asymptomatic, in both staff and, and the residents. So, and, and I'm glad you brought that up because that is an important point as far as, for example, the promotion of wearing the masks. And that is, even if you're feeling fine, and most importantly, even if you don't have a temperature, you could still be an emitter, you could still be emitting virus. Used to think that if you were asymptomatic or minimally symptomatic, that meant perhaps you were emitting a lower level of virus, lower concentration of virus. And we're not as certain about that now because asymptomatic individuals and presymptomatic individuals have been found to have some pretty appreciable level of virus at times. And it just seems to vary unpredictably from individual to individual. So that's the, the reason for emphasizing the precautions all the time, the social distancing and the masking and avoiding crowds all the time. Because even if you don't mean to, or if even there's somebody in the group that doesn't mean to and wouldn't, wouldn't want to infect anybody else, just because you feel okay doesn't mean that you're not transmitting.
Dr. Carter?
Dr. Gately, thank you again for coming. I just want to go a little deeper into what you stated before about the level of risk that you're willing to assume in the case, or the example you gave us about the child who was in class and they were positive for COVID and how the other, I guess the other families were willing to have them come back because of the mitigation plan that was in place. In that situation, is, would there be a time for anyone that was there not to be present or they need to quarantine, or how does that go? Or if you're s- okay with the level of risk that you're w- willing to assume, then people don't have to quarantine, or they won't have to not be at class the next day, or?
Basically, it ends up being a joint decision because it's so difficult to make these decisions. Now, if you wanna take the abundance of caution approach, which some schools have wanted to do, just the fact that there was a child present in the, the classroom for a period of time who was positive, then the school would decide to quarantine that cohort. And that is the importance, of course, of cohorting your students, and I'm sure your plan includes cohorting. Makes the investigation a lot easier if you decide, "Well, this child was in this classroom, these other 14 children were in that classroom, we're gonna count them all exposed and put them and the teacher in quarantine." I would not argue with you on that, but if you wanted to come back and say, "This child was only there for an hour, we were all wearing our masks, the desks were all spaced out, the social distancing, and here's one, and the ventilation was good." In that case, I would say you've got a lot of things in your favor in that case. What do you all think? Are you confident enough in all of these other measures for us to continue the class but with heightened scrutiny? It's almost like using the model that we're using in, in healthcare and in other areas where you may have been exposed, but we want you to continue to come to the hospital, we want you to continue to come to work, and so we'll let you, but we're really gonna be monitoring you very carefully and, and watching you very carefully. And again, in that particular case, if, if the staff and the parents, students are all willing to put that into place, then I'm not going to argue with them on that. I, I, assuming I feel confident that that's exactly what they're gonna do, they're really gonna double down on watching that particular classroom, and if any hint of trouble, any sign that something is not going right, you know, we're going right to quarantine, we're, we're doing every, everything else that ordinarily we would do under the complete abundance of caution approach.
Given that situation, would the parents be so they would, they wouldn't have to quarantine, or?
No. No, if, and, and it is an important point, a contact to a contact is not anything as far as we're concerned epidemiologically. The issue very often comes up is when you have a student, for example, and you quarantine that individual at home. Well, the individual's in quarantine, that means they're not a case yet, and you're going, but you're watching to see if they become a case. If three or four days into the quarantine, they become ill, now everyone in the house, where they've been quarantined, is actual contact and we have to start dealing with that situation. Now, you're quarantined and you're quarantined. The ideal situation would be if individuals could, could quarantine in a cohort or could quarantine apart from people who haven't been exposed, but most families can't do that. And so we just try to have to manage that situation as best we can. But at the initial part, if the child is being quarantined, for example, then the parents are not themselves quarantined or isolated.
Mrs. Evans?
I just wanna make sure, thank you for bringing all this, that I heard this correctly because I think it's really important for our schools. You have not seen classroom transmissions yet.
I have not seen what I would consider a sustained classroom transmission nor an outbreak. So I'm always being cautious with that because it's nothing I saw, nothing I detected. Again, with the asymptomatic students, it might well have been in a classroom that another student was infected and never developed symptoms, never got tested. So just being cautious with that. But no, I, from the college level down to the schools that I've been working against, school systems I've been working with, several of whom have had several cases, it's been an isolated case in that classroom that didn't show signs that the entire class had been infected or anything like that.
Dr. Nellis and then Dr. Gupta.
Is the, is testing effective or helpful in terms of trying to clear individuals that were exposed? Or is it really they have to wait for the two weeks after a potential exposure?
You, you cannot test your way out of quarantine. And a lot of people want to, but you, you cannot test your way out of quarantine. And the reason for that, and, and as you, as we bring up that concept, it's important to understand the difference between isolation and quarantine. I isolate cases. I isolate people who are positive, who are diagnosed. I quarantine people who have been exposed but are not cases yet. And so in the isolation period of 10 days, what I'm doing is I'm taking now data on hundreds of thousands, if not more, of patients all across the world, and I'm saying, typically when a person develops COVID-19, when you develop symptoms, let's say, typically your viral load is highest when you have developed the symptoms, right, at the time that you're developing symptoms. And by, very often, day seven, six, seven, that viral load has decreased pretty dramatically as the body apparently has responded to the infection. So that we figure by day 10, practically no one is infectious. And that is, of course, assuming the symptoms have resolved and everything else has gone like we expected to do. By day 10, we figure you're recovered, you are, from the standpoint of being infectious, probably not infectious anymore, and we're gonna release you from isolation. We do not require tests to release from isolation, and there's a whole nother set of reasons for that. On the other hand, if you're in quarantine, if you were exposed, day zero, day one, if you were exposed, then you incubate the virus. And what that means is, it's not immediately detectable, you're infected. A lot of people, as soon as they hear, "I was, I was a contact," they wanna run out and get a test. Is it the press secretary, McIn- McInnany? Did you notice that she tested negative Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and Sunday? And then Monday, positive? That's because it takes a while for that positive test to develop even after you've been exposed. So that's what we're doing with the 14-day quarantine period. It is, it's a matter of, okay, you've been exposed, you're feeling fine, day one, day two, you're feeling fine, day three, day four, maybe a little bit, day five, okay, you know, something is not right, day six, and by this time, we're getting you tested and we're saying, "Okay, you're no longer in quarantine, now you're a case." And so now you go into isolation. Well, people say, "Well, if I'm feeling fine at day seven, why not?" Well, because statistically, looking at, again, hundreds of thousands of cases now across the world, some people have been known to develop illness up to, the last good study that I saw that was like 12 and a half days, possibly 12 and a half days after the time that they were exposed, then they finally developed COVID. And since they were in, in quarantine, they weren't being exposed by anyone else, and it seemed to be the original exposure. So that, it can go out for 12 and a half days, and we just made it two weeks because that's easy. But back to the original question, so I'm feeling great at day seven of my quarantine. And so I say, "I'd like to go get a test." And the test comes back negative, and the person says, "So can I be let out of quarantine?" And the answer is, "No, you're gonna become positive on day 10." You know, "I feel it." Or you're gonna become positive on day nine. So we have to let the, the 14-day quarantine period e- extend out. Was that the question?
Thank you. Dr. Gupta?
I had, thank you for your service to this community, you've been a great asset. So I have two questions, so I won't lose my chance. First one is, you said, a lot of the younger people are assuming they may be asymptomatic. So what would be your recommendation to a school teacher who has underlying health condition and is worried about being around students who may be asymptomatic? And the second question I have is with the flu season sort of picking up, what will be your advice? Create no confusion between flu or symptoms and the COVID-19.
Wow. Is it just those two?
Yes.
Well, the, the asymptomatic individuals, they're very real, they're a high percentage, and depending on who you're looking up, up to 40% of cases may be asymptomatic. That's a fact of life. As I said earlier, that's why... Uh, as I said earlier, that's why these measures are important all the time. So for an individual, any individual that's concerned perhaps about being exposed, I think you have to eh, you have to accept that reality, that if I'm going into this room or I'm going into this, this situation, even though the kids are looking fine, even if the temperatures were checked at home and, and, you know, nothing was going on with that, we s- we can't relax at that point. I can't relax just 'cause everybody looks like they're feeling fine. Uh, there could be some kid here who will feel bad in a, in a day or so. There could be some that will never feel bad, and I will never know that they're exposing me, so I just have to be careful in that setting all the time. Uh, uh, again, emphasizing the distancing, the masking, the ventilation, uh, the cohorting, all these other measures that are taken, each one of them trying to reduce the, the chances that somebody unbeknownst will be able to transmit the infection in your classroom setting. Um, flu. Well, um, there's some bad news and there's some good news. For the flu, symptoms very closely mim- mimic COVID-19 in a lot of people. Now, flu's not necessarily associated with loss of taste and smell and some of the more exotic symptoms that we see with COVID-19. But the basic symptoms, fever, respiratory illness, so on and so forth, they, they pretty closely overlap. So the bad news is it may be difficult to tell. Uh, particularly if, if we were to have a robust flu season as well as continued COVID transmission. You may be confronted constantly and, and, uh, have heard from our pediatricians and our primary care docs and, and so many others, what are we supposed to do? Uh, we have a, um, a rubric, an algorithm that, uh, that BDH has, has put out to try to, to help with that decision-making. But basically what that algorithm says is, if, uh, summarize it, if it isn't COVID, what is it? And so if I've got a child and the, the child is having respiratory symptoms, a little bit of fever, um, some of these other things, and it's flu season as well, I can't just assume it's one or the other. And so the question is, how do I, how do I tell, how do I make this decision? Do I go get some kind of quick flu? Uh, a- another example I use is, is strep throat, sore throat, do I get a quick strep or something like that? I, I need a diagnosis. And I can say, oh, look, you know, this, that, and the other, and everybody in the house has the flu that we've, we've documented and proven, I think this is the flu. Okay, we can go with that. But you can't just decide it's the flu 'cause you don't want it to be COVID. Uh, that will be a challenge, but I promise good news. The good news is, and, and I just ran across this like the beginning of last week or maybe the week before. I was on a C O C A call, uh, with Centers for Disease Control, folks at the Centers for Disease Control. And they were presenting some great data, which has now subsequently come out in the M M W R, uh, the, the CDC Weekly Report. Uh, flu experience in the Southern Hemisphere. And so they looked at Chile, uh, and they looked at South Africa and, um, Australia. And of course, their flu season is inverted from ours. And they were showing these incredible graphs. They start back like twenty twelve. And each year, of course, the thing that I expect, you know, you get toward your flu season and the number of flu cases start going up. Some years go up higher than others, but it always goes up, there's always flu. Up and then up and down, bad year, good year, bad year. This year, for their flu season in the Southern Hemisphere, I've never seen a flat flu curve. As a matter of fact, I think for South Africa, the, the, the case curve was so flat, they had to put an arrow and say, this is the curve because it was lying down the X-axis, it was just lying down at the bottom. And every now and then a little hump, but nothing like previous flu seasons going all the way back. And so the hope is, the good news is, guess what? This is really effective against flu. Uh, 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 that's the, the hopeful conclusion that we're wanting to draw, 'cause it's so many different countries across the Southern Hemisphere that are having the same and so it's social distancing and not crowding and wearing masks and that sort of thing seems to knock it out of flu as well. So that's, that, that's a hope that it, we really won't have two outbreaks or two epidemics at once, the COVID-19 and the, uh, and the flu. We'll, we'll see how that plays out, but it certainly worked well for those countries.
All right, any other substantive questions from the board at this time? And if not, Dr. Gately, you have helped us and the public tremendously by your presence, and we commend you for your outstanding service to the citizens of Lynchburg and the broader area. And let's give Dr. Gately a hand. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This will move us now to, uh, item D for public comments. And please allow me to read the following. In accordance with policy B D H Z, public participation at school board meetings, the school board welcomes the requests and comments as established in the guidelines within that policy. Individuals who wish to speak before the school board shall have an opportunity to do so at this time. Persons desiring to address the school board shall submit an advance request in writing to the superintendent no later than twelve noon of the Wednesday, preceding the regular board meeting or by signing the public comment form, which shall be available to the public fifteen minutes before the meeting starts. Each person requesting to speak shall identify the subject he or she wants to address, and if he or she represents a group, he or she must identify the group. Due to limited seating, members of the public are encouraged to sign up in advance to speak during public comments. Per school board policy, the board will allow up to thirty minutes for public comments. Individuals be, will be invited to speak in the order they signed up and will be asked to wait outside in the lobby until it is their time to speak. And this is very important, and return to the lobby after speaking. All individuals are strongly encouraged to practice social distancing and wear a face covering over the mouth and nose. And so we do want the public to know that we, understanding COVID-19, are still entertaining written, uh, statements, uh, phone conversations, as well as in-person contact. And we have a few tonight, and I do want to read this. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to his or her official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes, and a speaker representing a group shall limit his comments or her comments to five minutes. We do not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. And so first on our list, uh, representing the transportation group is, um, Melissa Chacey.
Chesney.
Chesney, Melissa Chesney. Come right on in. Thank you for coming, Melissa.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am here to discuss several points in which I feel that the school board and the administration need to make amends and fix. First and foremost, six months ago, I personally, along with dozen of my coworkers, had a roundtable with the superintendent and several others in the administration for L C S. We spoke passionately and left all our cards on the table, detailing to you how we work in an excessively hostile environment and are paid less than half the national average. We were thanked for our candor and we were promised no reprisals or retaliation, and we were promised an investigation would be conducted. For the life of me, I don't know why I believed you. Nothing was done, absolutely nothing. In the middle of a pandemic, myself and thirty-five of my coworkers teamed up with the food and nutrition workers, and we fed this city. We were largely ignored while accolades were spread all over the food and nutrition workers, and we were thanked coming back August twenty-fourth by the food and nutrition staff, telling us that we worked for them and that without them, we wouldn't have jobs. This, ladies and gentlemen, is the culture that you breed. When you, we cannot count on you honoring your legal obligations to investigate and remedy a hostile department under your jurisdiction, how are we supposed to expect that you will check the head of your food and nutrition department from also bullying us and treating us poorly and conscripting her workers to do the same? Let me just say this, and I hope you listen. The bus drivers and the aides are not your enemies. Nine times out of ten, we have fought with the dispatcher about the issue before you even found out about it. It did nothing, but we were forced to do what they said regardless of if it was breaking the law. And trust me, that happens by making us do whatever it was or not. We work out here in the heat and the ridiculous traffic in a moving tin can. We are the first to see the kids of this community in the morning and the last to see them in the evening. We are the backbone of this school system. We don't get any respect, we don't get fair pay, and we don't get a professional environment in which to work in. Our city council did right by their workers and gave them a CARES Act bonus. I found out today that instead of giving the thirty-five of us and the food and nutrition workers a bonus for working during the pandemic, transportation bought a new computer system. Well, it didn't help. You brought us back before the nine weeks was over with almost no notice, giving parents until last Tuesday to decide if they wanted to keep their child remote or not, and that translated to most of your drivers not having their schedules by even two P M. yesterday, when we were leaving for the day. This morning, I called over the radio to find out if the parents were informed about the stop times, because I didn't pick anybody up. And I was told that it was the school's responsibility to inform the parents. Well, please tell me how the schools were supposed to tell the parents when the schedules were not even created until late on Monday. And this morning, a crazy amount of subs- additions, subtractions, and revisions needed to be made. Now, you cannot all blame this on the schools, and you cannot blame this all on the dispatchers. Most of this is your fault. You, the school board, the office of the superintendent on down, it is your job to steer this ship. You all are the ones who make decisions, who break promises, and who set standards. Right now, you are zero for six by my count. I am here out of an abundance and overabundance of frustration. In two years, we went from a staff of a hundred and fifteen drivers to sixty-three. We went from a pay scale that we had to fight hard to get to be, being frozen again. Tell me what the difference of having nine repeating steps and being on a cluster for two years and then it getting frozen again is. I've been here for six years and I still am getting the same pay as the day I walked in the door. My checks are three hundred and ninety-six dollars twice a month. Because every time we got a four percent raise, you all took four percent or more away from what you paid into our benefits. Three hundred and ninety-six dollars, folks, twice a month. Tell me how that's right. Oh, and exposing myself, working all summer, and I don't deserve the same bonus that the sanitation employee got? Why is that? Why don't we deserve better from you all? You can't seem to get it right. We, the drivers of L C S, catch it coming and going. It's from our own department, from the parents, from the schools, from the administration. I even asked for resources for our department because in the last six months, we have lost three coworkers. And grief counseling would have been good for us, considering everything that's going on, and I could not even get that. I heard the same old role runaround, did you ask this person, did you talk to that one? We lost Pete McCormick, Dexter Bowlin, and Virginia Penny Robey. They meant something to us, and it was important that I said their names here today. Because they mattered, we mattered, and the way you all treat us is shameful. You all need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa, for coming and sharing with us tonight. Our next speaker, if I have it right, is Malia King. If it's not, she will get me corrected. It's coming as an individual?
It's a tough one to follow, sorry. All right. Good afternoon or evening now. I am Malia Craig King, a nineteen eighty-eight graduate of East Sea Glass, a Navy veteran, and I've been a special education teacher here for twenty-two years. But tonight, I'm here to talk to you as a parent to give you firsthand information with regards to the inadequacies of the remote learning plan for middle and high school students. I'm representing my own boys, their friends, my niece, and countless other families and children I know who are having the same experiences. My oldest children are in eighth and tenth grades. They are both considered gifted. My eighth grader is twice exceptional. They are eager learners who give a hundred percent effort to school. They grasp the importance of a quality education because that is what our family has instilled in them. I assure you, I am not here to place blame on any teachers. They were handed an insurmountable task to create a quality curriculum and present it in a meaningful instructional manner through an asynchronous model virtually. What I do want you to know is that kids are being broken, and I fear for their futures. Students are putting forth considerable effort and having emotional breakdowns because of the tremendous workload that they are bearing alone, because they are not able to ask questions when they don't understand something, or they're not able to locate an assignment that they were told was missing, even though they know they did it. In most cases, all of this is happening with little to no feedback from their teachers. They are often being expected to learn material by reading it on a screen or watching a video. They are basically self-teaching, yet are being graded on everything they are supposed to click on. Intelligent, hardworking kids are getting Cs and Ds where they usually get As and Bs, even in P E. Instruction is happening via intricate slideshows or Google Sites, and within these are often links to YouTube videos or other websites that kids must navigate independently, again, with no guidance. The ability to engage in meaningful discussions is gone. Yet students are expected to complete graded assignments, often without ever hearing the content explained to them. And for secondary students, the grades they're getting and what they actually learn will influence their futures. All of these graded assignments mean something on a grade point average, I'm sure you all realize that. There are those who assumed that the older kids would do fine with the technology. That has not been the case. Having seven to eight different Google classrooms to learn to navigate, again, independently, is a tremendous challenge, even for the gifted kids. Parents are having to hire tutors, paying for it out of their pockets. Hire tutors to do what the school system is supposed to be doing, which is educating. That is its primary purpose. To those in the educational community who are pushing back against face-to-face instruction, especially for secondary students, I say you are missing the priority of quality education. It's time to move back towards the excellence for all that L C S used to be known for before we lose these kids emotionally and academically. Thank you.
Thank you, Malia. At this time, we have Andrew Glover, who is representing conservative parents of Lynchburg. Mr. Glover?
All right. Good evening, Lynchburg City School Board. My name is Andrew Glover. I'm an L C S parent, and I'm representing the conservative parents of Lynchburg Group, a group of over one hundred and fifty Lynchburg families, teachers, and L C S staff members. First off, I do want to thank Dr. Crystal Edwards for finally listening to parents and taking the first steps to reopening the school bu- buildings for our kids. As you are all hopefully in agreement, face-to-face education is significantly more productive and beneficial for our children's education and individual development. Compared to virtual learning, uh, especially compared to virtual learning. My children, and many of the children in our group, are all looking forward to joining the over seventy percent of other kids who had parents indicating they are ready to return to a normal, to normality and choose face-to-face education. With the decision finally made to open school buildings, I'd like to take my remaining time and urge the school board and administration to not take half measures. Either open the schools completely or don't. If we're going to open up for face-to-face learning, there's no reason to open up, not to open them up fully. As it stands now, families who choose will only be allowed to send their kids back to school for two days per week. Members of the school board, that is simply not enough. Members of the school board, that is simply not enough, and it's only marginally better than the fully remote environment. This plan still leaves parents scrambling for childcare three days a week, and because the kids have actual school days, many of these kids are likely not to participate in the remote learning at the necessary levels. Additionally, kids in and out of the school buildings will have more time in the community and risk a greater level of COVID-nineteen transmission when outside their peer group. Two weeks ago, Dr. Edwards was questioned by the Lynchburg City Council as to why schools were not fully reopening like all the other communities around us, or like the private schools in the region. She responded that the primary and overwhelming reason for this was related to transportation constraints. I think we heard from someone earlier on that. This is a problem that LCS has been fighting since before COVID began. Last month, the school board member, Dr. Gupta, also asked a similar question regarding how to overcome this issue. At the last school board meeting, you also elected to hold on to $2.5 million in CARES funding until you were able to identify an actual need for that money. This was reiterated in the city council session after a question by Councilman Wright. Members of the school board, if the only thing that is preventing us from opening schools completely to a five-day schedule is transportation, I would suggest that there's no more important place to spend that CARES funding than temporarily expanding our busing capacity to get kids back in school. If you allow me, I'd like to introduce you to Joshua Pratt. Joshua owns Lynchburg's largest and only charter transportation service. In addition to providing busing services for a large number of area colleges, Joshua's company also establishes vendor, is an established vendor for LCS's auxiliary transportation needs. Charter bus services, like those of Joshua's company, provide a unique set of services, which introduce, which include both temporary and contract-based transportation needs. This contract-based temporary busing constraint is exactly what Dr. Crystal Edwards identified as the item preventing schools from reopening on a full-time schedule. By leveraging the two-and-a-half million dollars in CARES funding, I believe that using a charter service would enable LCS to rapidly expand their transportation needs while limiting long-term financial liabilities traditionally associated with direct hiring and temporary environments. I ran a few numbers, and you can also give every one of your bus drivers $500 a week bonus with that CARES money and still hire forty-four charter bus drivers. I strongly encourage you to open up a dialogue either with Joshua or a charter transport, another charter transportation company. This can be either done in a formal capacity, such as an agenda modification to this meeting, or approaching him after the meeting to get his insights. I've had the opportunity to have several great conversations with him over the last two weeks, and as a veteran in the industry, he has fantastic ideas on how to rapidly identify and hire bus drivers quickly so that our kids can get back to school. Incidentally, his company's also been on negative revenue since March, and the public-private partnerships are something that I've heard you guys repeat multiple times. It's these partnerships that will help our kids, our schools, our communities, and our businesses recover through this. Contrary to the opinions of some people, my agenda is not to cause conflict. It has and always has been to get kids back to school. Two weeks ago, you identified a barrier, and today, if you choose to listen to parents, we can help you solve challenging problems. The only thing left to do is for you to take action and open our schools fully.
Thank you, Mr. Glover.
And you're here till after the meeting?
We will. We will now hear from Sheri Allman, who is an individual who will now come and address the board. Come right on in. Thank you for coming.
My name is Sheri Allman, and I'm an LCS parent of an eleventh grader who normally attends Heritage High School. My son and I are here today to support the need for all LCS children to have the option to return to in-person learning for the full five-day schedule, which has been suspended for seven months. Despite receiving $2.5 million in CARES funds and having seven months' planning time, LCS has been the only school district in our area to refuse to reopen to in-person learning in any capacity while every other surrounding school district has, including private schools in our very own city, who have returned in person for the full five days a week. Our kids are sinking and falling further behind every day. With the recent announcement that LCS will begin two days of in-person learning, starting with the younger grade levels, I'm hoping that this board will not reverse these decisions or attempt to deny older grade levels this opportunity. Because although two days in-person learning is more than what we had, this is still not adequate to provide our children an equitable education. With the proposed two days in-person schedule, the school day has even been shortened, and high school students will only attend half their classes each day, seeing each teacher only once weekly. This is not much different than the completely virtual plan. Our students of all grade levels deserve and need to be allowed the option to return to in-person learning for five days a week. Without the teacher interaction or engagement, there is no learning happening with the virtual learning plan. Many students, even previous honor students, including my son, are failing. The kids are held accountable at the same in-person grading standards, with nobody actually teaching the curriculum, while teachers and schools have currently been granted waivers for testing and accreditation. Denying our children teaching while holding them alone accountable for learning is a disservice to our children that is literally setting them up for failure. And while LCS has continued to keep schools closed for in-person learning, in-person sports conditioning at high schools has been happening since July for all sports. Athletes are allowed to condition daily without masks, not only on outside fields, but also inside courts and in weight rooms. If this is deemed safe, it should also be safe enough for the same students to learn together in a classroom. COVID has affected everyone, but every other school district in our area has returned back to in-person learning, and many for the full five days a week. Yes, precautions will need to be taken, and this will not be convenient, and community rates will never be where you want them to be. But LCS's main concern should be about advancing excellence and equity in the Lynchburg City Schools, just as the mission statement reads. This cannot happen with virtual learning or two days a week. Our kids need to be educated. They need the option to return to five days a week in-person instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri, for coming. We will now hear from Trevor, or Trevin Allman.
My name is Trevor Allman. I'm a junior at Heritage High School. I wanted to speak today because I think it's important that you know how badly not being able to attend school is affecting me, my friends, and thousands of Lynchburg City students. Ever since school has been canceled, students have been struggling both emotionally and academically. It's depressing enough that we have nowhere to go because school is normally our social outlet and gives us a healthy routine. But the virtual learning plan is not giving us an education, and it's also causing us to have terrible grades, which will go on our records. I'm responsible. I do all my work, and I'm in advanced classes and always have been an honorable student. Right now, with virtual learning, I'm spending at least six hours a day on my Chromebook, turning in all my work, and I'm still failing my strongest subject. And I'm not alone. All my friends are doing poorly also. We're given the work to do, but nobody's teaching it. It is unfair that we're being graded on our work without anyone teaching it to us. I'm worried if what my grades will look like when I complete my college applications. And I'm sure I will not know any of the required information for my exams or SATs. Right now, us students feel like the teachers in the school district don't care about our education because we want to be taught, and we have a, we have no real interaction from our teachers. But we're still getting graded harshly. This makes us feel helpless, hopeless, and like our voices don't matter. When you're set up to fail, you will eventually want to stop trying, and that's what this virtual learning plan is causing. This makes us feel like if they don't care, why should we care? Does Lynchburg really want to produce a generation of uneducated people who don't care about the future? The hybrid plan is a step in the right direction, but it's not much better than the virtual plan. LCS students need to be allowed the option to attend school again in person, full five days a week. We want to go to school. We want to learn. Please don't stop my generation from getting an education. Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. We always appreciate students coming to speak to us. Thank you, sir. Now, finally, representing the Lynchburg Education Association, Mr. Carl Luce.
Good evening to all of you, and let me start, let me start by thanking each of you again for your service and your dedication to the students and staff of Lynchburg City Schools. Let me also congratulate the staff in our elementary schools and in transportation for making today a success for our youngest students. It certainly wasn't without its issues, but the professionalism shown by my colleagues was admirable. That said, there are still quite a few concerns we must address and must address them sooner rather than later. The first thing we will address is safety, because as a wise man once said, "Safety second just doesn't make sense." On August 4th, 2020, Dr. Nillis asked this board how we would know the right time to come back into the buildings. He was unequivocally told by multiple board members that one of the biggest factors in the decision would be the positivity rate dropping for fourteen days straight and being below five percent. Obviously, that was not quite as big a factor as we were led to believe, since neither of those things has happened. In fact, we just saw that we are the big red dot on Dr. Gateley's map. Now, while I could address the forty-nine-year-old North Carolina teacher who died on Sunday of COVID, or the Chicago teacher who died yesterday of COVID, or I could go into the long-term effects of people having related to COVID, or the fact that one-third of people who were asymptomatic or having long-term health issues related to COVID, what I will do instead is ask this: What is it that would cause this division to return to remote instruction? When Dr. Edwards came to each of the schools and talked with us, she told us that there wasn't just one factor that would determine if we returned to in-person learning or not. You had to look at a variety of factors. Before I drive my car, I also consider a variety of factors. Is my windshield clean? Does it need an oil change? Does it have enough gas? But there are some factors that would obviously prevent me from driving my car, if the brakes don't work, for example. So what is that thing for LCS? Because your staff members and your parents and your students deserve to know. If this happens, we will return to remote instruction. What's the magic number? If we're ignoring the positivity rate, then what aren't we ignoring? Or is it just full steam ahead, no matter what? Secondly, we need to do a better job of bringing in the staff sooner when decisions are going to be made in this division that directly impact classroom instruction. Right now, your staff is stressed and, quite frankly, distrustful of you. This could have been avoided had staff been a part of all aspects of the planning process. LCS did a great job of bringing staff in when we went remote in the spring. They did a great job of involving staff when it came to the return-to-learn team and planning the big aspects of the start of this year. But when it came to the details of how all of this would be implemented, including the timeframe, staff members weren't consulted until they had been painted into a corner. It doesn't matter which side of the remote versus in-person debate you were on, and we had members on both sides. When it comes to having a voice, we all wanted a say in how this would happen. We all want to make sure that our kids have the safest and most effective experience that we can give them. Please remember that going forward. Lastly, let's talk about compensation. The LEA, LCS, and this board worked hand-in-hand to create a pay schedule that would compensate employees for their experience in this division. It wasn't enough to be sure, but it was a start. Then the pandemic hit, and budgets were slashed, and as is typical, the first thing to go was staff compensation. But this board committed itself to revisiting the issue of compensation in October, once we found out if reality matched projections. It's October, and we know that while the state certainly took a financial hit, it wasn't as much as some of the experts predicted. And now our reality is that we're sending our staff members back into in-person instruction while the number of local COVID cases continues to decline. When the city of Lynchburg gave its employees $1,700 bonuses for working through the pandemic, we didn't say a word. But guess what? We worked through a pandemic. I didn't miss a single day of scheduled work last year or this year. We had drivers, food service, maintenance, front office, and staff members working throughout the summer. And this division wants its staff to work in person during a worldwide pandemic, wants its teachers to work in person and remotely while wiping down surfaces and monitoring hallways, stairwells, bathrooms, lunches, and holding Zoom meetings, wants its food service staff to provide in-person food for students, deliver to classrooms, and provide for pickup, wants its custodians to go into the fray and make sure the schools are germ-free, wants its drivers to drive, maintain social distance between kids, and clean the buses between runs, and all while you have frozen the pay schedule, again unconscionable. Despite the fact that we have a frustrated and politically impotent local politician who can't tell the difference between a Happy Meal and a steak dinner, your staff thrives in every situation it is placed in, and it deserves at a minimum to have its pay schedules restored and restored immediately. Because I know, and you know, that LCS puts filet mignon on the menu for our kids each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl, for your service and your statements. Thank you very much. This concludes our public comment section, and as the meeting unfolds, I'm sure insights may or may not be given. We now go to item E1 on our agenda, and this is coming to us for information around the finance report. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely, and I'm going to invite Ms. Laconich, who's probably on her way down, to join us and go over the finance report. There she is. A copy is in Board Docs for the public.
Good evening. This evening, I'm going to present the financial report through August 31st. The adopted budget is, still remains the current budget. There's been no changes. The revenue received to date is 7.88%. The expenditures to date, we have spent 10.83%. That, again, I know I'm repeating myself from the last board meeting, but that's, that's not out of the ordinary. Our sales tax for July gets pushed back to the prior year, and we start dealing with, in the beginning of the part of the year, that our lottery-funded items do not get funded until January. So there's nothing alarming in that number at this point. The one thing that we do want to point out is that we are going to, revenue-wise, we're going to continue to monitor our ADM. That will affect our revenue. We also know that the state has gone back and reassessed the sales tax, and they have lowered the sales tax projection for this year. The good news is that they have said that they are offsetting it with an increase to our basic aid. There is going to be a new count tool that's going to be released after the special session is complete. We have not received that yet. So those are some of the other things that we're looking at, but for the most part, there's nothing on here that's alarming. Again, we just want to be mindful to be strategic in our spending, be very careful, and because the revenue number is still going to be unknown based off of the ADM. I have provided a revenue report and an expenditure report, and I'm happy to accept any questions.
Thank you for your due diligence, Mrs. Conich, always. Any board members with a question for this report coming to us by information? You've had a chance to look at it previously. Dr. Nillis?
Yeah, on the expenses, a couple of the items, sand or technology, other category, looks to be there's a fairly large percentage that's already been expended. I guess I'm just wondering, are those one-time purchases in support of the particular budget category, or?
I apologize. You were saying it was technology. Was it function?
There are like people transportation.
Oh, people transportation.
Other.
The departments, when they start out, part of their budgeting technique is they go back and see what they have spent. They know that they're going to have fuel expenditures. They open up blanket purchase orders. We are required to have a purchase order on file before you make any purchase, so they will actually open up blanket purchase orders to hold that funds aside because they know they're going to have that ongoing expense, and then that will show them what they have remaining that is eligible to be spent elsewhere.
Thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Brennan?
Mrs. Conich, you referred to the average daily membership, and I guess September 30 is with our day to get that information. Can you make any additional comments about that for this year?
Well, we know that, we actually had received an estimated ADM mid-September because we had some information we had to provide to the state. Our IT department actually calculates that, so they gave us some rough, rough numbers later, but mid-September, our budget again is built on 7,710.4 students. The mid-year September enrollment was 7,651. That excludes your pre-K and your post-grads and your lower students, who although they are in your enrollment number, you do not get funded through your ADM process. And so at that point, the mid-September enrollment was 7,651, which goes back to what Dr. Edwards had said at the previous meeting, was we were about, down about sixty students. And at the time- And at the time, our department that calculates that did a conservative projection and stated that they, based off historical data and the trends, they were estimating it to be 7,565. Again, it was a conservative projection, which would be down about 145 students. So that is something we are continuing to monitor.
Thank you.
Dr. Gupta?
So based on the attendance, the attendance in this year is down 12% compared to last year. So if we correlate, do you see any effect of that decrease in attendance on your ADMs as you go forward?
I don't want to, I mean, I don't actually calculate the ADM. I think it's definitely something you're going to have to keep, they're going to keep monitoring, to see what that attendance is. To be down 60 students compared to where we were last year, it's not that big, you know, that large of a decrease. If that conservative projection does pan out, I went into the current count tool to see what that impact was on the school division's budget, and it was just over $850,000. But again, that is why we held back the CARES money, because we have two years to spend that, once we have some of these uncertainties known.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Laconich, for sharing this finance report update. And board members have further questions, you certainly can contact Dr. Edwards or Ms. Laconich regarding those matters. We will now move to item F, which is our consent agenda. And via our parliamentary procedures and Robert's rules, we can have our consent agenda to list several items for approval of the board by a single motion. And under the consent agenda, we have our instruction and program policy updates, which have been reviewed previously, and you noticed their listing, our religious exemption under item 2, in which the proper names and ages are appropriately recorded, human resource report, and our human resource report addendum. Is there a motion at this time to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion from Dr. Carter, is his second. Second by Ms. Morrison. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, a motion carries. I ask Dr. Edwards to please allow our very capable and able director to be introduced to the board tonight, so Dr. Edwards, would you please?
Absolutely, and part of the consent agenda was the human resource report and the human resources report addendum, and it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our new HR director, Ms. Flor Hardwell, who is behind the scenes on all of that human resource reporting and work. Some of you met her earlier, but for everyone, I'd just like to introduce her to the full board.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Let's give her a hand, the kind work that she is doing. Welcome to the community. Welcome, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much.
We're keeping her busy, so.
Thank you for everything. All right, now we move to a very exciting part of our agenda, which is our student reps' comments. Dr. Edwards?
Yes.
She, who is that?
Grayson.
Oh, I'm telling, who was at the mic? Oh, she did.
Oh, it's Ann. She's just ready.
Okay, yeah, I got you. I'll make sure. All right, we're going to go to our item G, our student representative comments. And as you know, in our recent work session, we've had a conversation around our student reps, and I'm so delighted that Bob and I had an opportunity, along with Dr. Edwards and our board clerk, to meet with these two outstanding students who will be serving in the student rep responsibilities. And so first, we're going to hear from our Heritage High School representative, Grayson Arnold, who is a senior at Heritage High School, and we're ready. Go right ahead, Grayson.
Well, first off, I would just like to say hello, and I'm really honored to be here, and I was pleasantly, like, I was just so happy to get this opportunity. So I just want to introduce myself. My name is Grayson Arnold. I've been in LCS schools for about five years. I did my eighth grade year at Sandusky Middle School, and I came over to Heritage, and my mom also teaches at Sandusky, so that's cool. I am a CBCC student as well. I'm dual-enrolled, and I'm lucky to be a part of that, and it's a really good environment, and I really miss it. Hopefully, we'll get to get back soon. I love sports, and I'm part of the track team that won, I think, in 2019 in the spring, and then just recently, 2020. And so that's really, that's an amazing experience, and I love the community and environment there. Then I also did basketball for a little bit, and then volleyball, which we don't have a coach right now, but we'll get into that in a moment. After high school, I want to go to a four-year university. I'm not necessarily sure where. I do know I want to go out of state so I can get that new experience, but I want to do athletic training. Like I said, I love sports, and I really do love, like, the way, like, the muscles and stuff. It's really interesting, athletic training is. So to start off, I would just like to present, you know, the different feelings that I've gotten from students and teachers and different things from online learning and hybrid. So students, we feel like it's a little bit of, a little, little bits of a lot of work that makes sense, but we're working through it, and I think that there's a lot of students that are working really well during this, being remote, and we're enjoying having that pace that's our own, and we're not necessarily having to worry about slowing down for someone else, or, and that's good because, you know, we've adapted to it. Now, there's other, others of us who have not been so fortunate, and they probably would rather have the hybrid learning, and, which is good, because I feel like for some of us, for some of us who are more social, we really enjoy being able to see the faces of our teachers, whether they're covered or not, you know? And I think that we're moving in a good step, you know, to start hybrid learning, but I think there's pros for both of them. Um, let's see. I also think it's important for y'all to know that students, we're, even though we complain a lot of the time, we really are working, and we are starting to find that balance of having a social life, but also getting good grades and succeeding. Um, and let's see. Oh, yeah, and I think teachers, teachers are definitely excited to see us. I went to do, take my senior pictures, and they were like, "Oh, my gosh, I can't wait for y'all to come back." So that's really good, you know, as a student, to see that they're excited for us to come. But I also know they're probably a little anxious too about making sure that everything's finalized, but I think it'll all come into play, and we'll figure out what works and what doesn't work when the time comes. I think, and in school, like, Heritage overall, since I've been, we've been practicing and stuff, I've seen, like, different reforms and stuff that we're making inside of the school, so that way we're ready for hybrid learning, which is good. I know we've added some, like, hand sanitizers all over the place, and we have different signs and stuff, just to remind us, you know, to stay hygiene, no matter, like, if you go to the bathroom, no matter what, if it's just a fixture, make sure you wash your hands, just a reminder to really keep you on your toes for learning. And then, just a little extracurricular update, starting with the arts. Theater, they're actually going to be, they're most likely, most likely, we're hoping, they're going to be able to have a competition in February, which is really good. I know that my friends in theater, they're super excited for that. They're looking forward to it. And then VTA is virtual this year, which is good. But onto sports, you know, like one of the parents mentioned, we are able to practice, which is good, and I know that the people in sports, like, we're having to get used to wearing masks and stuff while we're lifting and all that, but we're, we're working through it, which is good, and we're really looking forward to it. And I would just want to shout out my athletic trainer, Holberg. He's doing a great job of just kind of reminding us what we need to do to keep us safe, so that way we're able to be able to compete, I think, in December, in the later seasons. And I know that all of the athletes, including myself, are really looking forward to the time that we're able to compete. So right now, we're just working as hard as we can and just enjoying life as we can the most. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you, Grayson. That was an excellent report, and we appreciate that. And now, Jaden Scott, a junior at EC Glass High School, will now share her report.
Okay, hi, y'all. My name is Jaden Scott. I'm 16. I attend Glass, Glass is my base school, but I technically do the dual enrollment as well as Grayson, so I attend CBCC. I don't think they have a plan to go back to school anytime soon. I know they're doing labs and things on Fridays, but I'm pretty sure for the most part, we're going to stay remote. And so basically, the big question has been, how do you guys like remote learning? What is it like? And honestly, I can say that students are trying. We're putting in an effort to be able to get to the point where, if we are doing remote, then we know how to do it, we know how to pace ourselves. Me personally, I do like remote. It gives me a sense of responsibility. It makes me feel as though I have my own time, and now I get to figure out what works best for me, and I think that's a really good thing because we're not always going to be in school. We're going to have to go to jobs, we're going to have to get things done on a certain time, so I think that that does help a lot. I know EC Glass is, their main focus right now is freshmen because they missed out. They had moving up night that got canceled at the beginning of COVID, and then they had freshman orientation. That never happened, so we're trying to get things established to where we can do freshman tours, or we could do a unity day where we're all there for the freshmen, of course, under all the health guidelines. I know EC Glass has already recorded a video of the new school tour, because we have tape up and we have markers saying where you can and cannot go, which ways to walk down the hallway. So definitely, when we go back to school, it's going to be different, but I know that Glass is making the necessary precautions and doing everything that should be done in place to get back to school. A little bit more about me. I have been in LCS all my life. I started out in Lincoln Elementary, then I went to Lincoln Middle, now I'm at EC Glass, and I can truly say that there is such a strong sense of community just with LCS, and I know you guys consider yourself LCS too, because even when I walked in, like, I'm shaking, I'm all nervous, I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, I gotta talk." And then the way that you guys just introduce yourselves, you make you feel like you don't need to be nervous to be up here. So I get that sense of community even in here, even from the first day. So I thank you guys for that, and I also thank you for this amazing opportunity. Ms. Flor actually reached out to me, I want to say maybe a month or two ago about it, and when I heard about it, I was like, "Man, I gotta do it." So I'm here, and I thank you guys so much, because based on what I've seen today, this is a real commitment. It's a time commitment, and you guys have to be, yes, you guys have to be willing to do this. And so thank you guys, because I know that you all only want what's best for our schools, and I appreciate that so much. So thank you for all that you have done. Thank you for allowing me to be here to help, and yeah, thank you guys so much.
Thank you both. Goodness.
So we think-
Let's just make the life a whole lot better.
Yeah. We thank Grayson and Jaden for their reports and answering the questions that we asked them to answer, and they've been briefed on the whole nine yards of what we are about and how they can continue to engage their thoughts within the flow of our meetings. Thank you both for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that now moves us to item H1, which is our school board committee reports, and tonight, we are delighted to be able to hear from our finance committee chair, Mr. Harvey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
LCS Finance Committee Report. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, September 22nd at 3:30. Dr. Carter, Dr. Nillis, and myself were present, as well as non-voting members, Dr. Coleman and Ms. Morrison, as well as Dr. Edwards and Ms. Laconich. Dr. Brennan was also in attendance. The committee covered several items during our meeting. A draft of the fund balance use request was presented by staff for information. A final copy of that was included in your school board packets. We asked for the board's approval during our new business session. You will see that LCS and the school nutrition office staff bonuses have been discussed by the committee and are a priority on the proposed request. Other items, including three replacement buses with Wi-Fi capabilities, three wheelchair-accessible minivans, a field supervisor's vehicle, three replacement vehicles, and two mowers for building and grounds, as well as several other repair items. It also includes an allotment for capital improvement projects, COVID-related expenses, and our restricted textbook reserve fund. The budget calendar for 2020, 2021 was presented by the staff for information, and Ms. Laconich reached out to the LCS health insurance representative and is requested that he would attend our October Finance Committee meeting to answer any outstanding questions and give additional support information to the board. I have assembled several of the board members' questions that I have received to date, so if any other questions, please get them to me ASAP so I can get them to our representative ahead of the meeting. Also, if any member would like to, any board member would like to attend this meeting as well, please let me know so we can plan accordingly on the size of the meeting space. Our next meeting will be October 27th at 3:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Any board member have a question for Dr. Gupta?
Thank you for the report. So what would be the mode for any faculty, staff who have questions about health insurance? Can they email it to you? What would be the appropriate way?
If faculty or staff, I would say that would need to come through-
Edwards, Dr. Edwards, yeah.
Well, Dr. Edwards, or through the administration, through Human Resources. The questions that I'm fielding are mainly from school board members that we can present ahead of time to our representative, and I believe you've had some questions. Dr. Brennan has given me some questions to date, and so if there are any other questions, please let me know, and I'll make sure that they get presented. I'd like to give all the questions ahead of time so he has a chance to answer them in as much detail as possible and sort of focus on where our questions come from.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta, for your question, and again, reiterating that those would go to Dr. Edwards. And thank you, Mr. Harvey, for the fine way you are moving the Finance Committee forward. Any other questions for the Finance Committee? Hearing none, that was before us for information, and so we're thankful for that. And that now moves us to our unfinished business, item I1, and we are going to deal with return-to-learn updates. I do want to let the board know that obviously, Dr. Edwards and staff have engaged in the greatest of caution and professionalism, and so she will now go into detail to explain what is before us tonight in regards to return-to-learn.
Absolutely. So there are a couple things that are on the agenda with the, with the updates, and in a bit, I'm going to invite staff in just to talk a little bit about what's been happening today. And as Mr. Luce and Mr. Glover said, there are multiple factors that factor into our decision with return-to-learn. I do want to thank Dr. Gateley for coming and sharing the medical side of it. I applaud our students sharing their views and vision and terms of remote learning, in-person learning, our parents, our staff, and certainly everybody who has contributed to this. I will say, a couple weeks ago, we looked at our data, and again, looking at multiple things, and Dr. Gateley explained that, you know, COVID in the community, and he talked about the 18 to 25-year-olds, and he spoke of a meeting that we have every Tuesday that involves every superintendent in the area, Bedford, Campbell, Appomattox, Amherst, myself, private schools, public schools, the colleges, the universities, and the medical professionals. And we do this every Tuesday, and we talk about COVID in the community, and for us, we look at COVID in Lynchburg City Schools. And I was glad to have Dr. Gateley here to talk about what really is behind the spike, because it's not an easy decision to decide whether or not open schools, closed schools, remote learning, hybrid learning, full in-person, but it's one done in consult with a lot of information. So in looking at the trends, particularly two weeks ago, when our positivity rate was about 5.2, 5.3, and at the point in August, when we were deciding July, it was about 11.7. So between August up until the time that we made a plan to bring back our pre-K to two, it went from 11.7 down to 5.2. It has since gone up, and I will admit, it is the one thing that I can't control. It is also the one thing that I struggle with. How much lead notice do you give families to say, in two weeks, in three weeks, in five weeks, we're going to bring kids back? And then you get there, and the numbers have changed. And then how much lead notice do you say, "We're not bringing kids back," even though you may have planned that your kids would be in school? It is not an easy decision, and it is not one that I take lightly and try- And it is not one that I take lightly and try to make. And I do, I am grateful for all of the voices that help make that decision. So we did decide that, starting today, we would bring back our youngest learners. And that was one in part doing to the fact that, you know, it is really difficult to try to teach kids to read, our babies to read remotely. This is also the group of all of our students who have devices. Pre-K to two is the group that we put some out there, but we did not have a device per child. So it was really imperative to try to get these students back in school. Two days a week, we do have students on the bus, one student per seat. Kids can sit together if they're siblings. Our classrooms are spaced out six feet apart. So in addition to one of the factors being transportation, the other being space and having kids in classrooms. And we do want them to interact with their teaching. So staffing is yet another factor that played into that. So our plan, of course, to bring the students back today, bring the next cohort back on Thursday. And then next week, the third through sixth grade. And then in two weeks, on the 27th, to bring back the high school students. And I do want to thank the board for just all of your constant ear as I'm going back and forth with you and sharing information with you to get to this point. But again, it's a very difficult decision. And as the students who just left, Jayden and Grayson said, it's a big commitment that we have. And I do applaud you with that. In addition, you saw the V D H dashboard. We also, on our website, have our own dashboard. Another factor that we use is what is our daily COVID case, right? We know what's going on in the school, in the community. We see what's going on in the colleges. I learn about what's going on in different schools, private schools and other public schools. But what's happening in L C S? Because we are fully staffed. Our staff are here. And we do have some students in. And our athletes have been doing some conditioning. So we do have some students in and we have been monitoring our COVID. So we do have a daily dashboard on our website, which talks about COVID in Lynchburg City schools. And I think that's important for our families to know and look at as well. All in all, I would say we're making the best of what was handed to us. And we are listening to staff. We are listening to students. We're listening to families. And we're trying to make the best decisions that we can in this very trying, very trying time. I would like to invite my staff to come in so that we can just give you a quick update on what has been going on in the schools, especially today.
Dr. Edwards, we are focused before the staff comes in. I had to ask that, in harmony with what we have been doing in the past, these modifications are in harmony with previous discussions and decisions that we have made. But I did want us to go on record tonight as an action of the board to modify what has been previously presented to us in this regard as an action item tonight. And so I would like to entertain a motion that the board would approve the modification to the return to learn options and that that remote-only learning option, parent, families, and caregivers will have the option to choose in-person learning hybrid model for their children according to the schedule that is listed on the agenda. Is there a motion that I want to make at this time?
Is the change in the date that students are returning, is that what we're voting on?
Yeah.
Yes.
To give parents the option to have kids come back pre-K to second.
As printed on the agenda, that's correct.
Yeah, it's on the agenda.
Yeah, on there.
Is there a motion?
Wait a minute.
Moved by Dr. Gupta as a second?
A second.
All right, second by Ms. Morrison. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Please.
I've heard an issue from a school teacher who may have underlying health condition and he or she is worried about being in the classroom with the kids. So do we have a plan in place for the teachers who are, you know, have underlying health conditions? They are not COVID positive, but could be pretty detrimental to their health.
We absolutely do. And I can talk more about that when we get to the, when the staff comes in.
Okay. I was asking- Dr. Brennan, please. Special concern.
My suggestion is, I think there's a motion on the floor, but I think part of that deal was we want to have a discussion about this and the issues about return to learn. So questions could be answered and things. So we can either-
Bring the staff in?
Excuse me?
So are you asking to bring the staff in?
So I think it's been seconded. And I'm just saying, opening up for discussion, if that's okay with the chair, for the discussion about the motion before we actually vote on the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Dr. Gupta had raised a question. And so we're in discussion period now. So, Dr. Gupta, did you get a satisfactory response to your question?
She'll wait for the staff.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? All right. Anybody? All right, then, if I don't hear any further discussion of questions, then I'm presuming that we can call for the vote. Yes, Dr. Nillis?
Since this is wide open, I mean, what's preventing us from? I mean, at the end of October, we're going to have kids in classes two days, two days a week. What's the plan for getting the schools fully open? I mean, this is, I mean, that's all part of this. Can we accelerate that, you know? Does the transportation issue get easier when all the kids are in school? Or is that an issue? I can't, I can't answer that. So I feel like this is plopped down in front of me. And I'm like, well, this is okay, but there's more, there's more to this. I mean, we're-
Point well taken, Dr. Nillis. This, of course, is our October meeting. We will have a work session. We can have additional meetings.
Man, I understand what the motion is. I'm just-
I know you do. I know you do. Before Dr. Edwards responds, I do want the board to understand that this is a continual discussion. And so Dr. Nillis's point is well taken. Tonight, we're bringing this to you so that we can affirm where we are. Dr. Edwards?
I was going to kind of co-sign what you were saying. And to Dr. Nillis's point, one of the things that Dr. Coleman asked us to do is on every board meeting and work session, return to learn is an unfinished business. It's probably going to be unfinished until COVID is finished. And then we'll be finished with it. And we are constantly making decisions and evaluating and coming up with new options and strategies. And right now, yes, transportation is with putting one kid per seat on the bus and that being a three-feet distance between children wearing masks. That is at one of those hampering factors. Also, keeping six feet in each classroom, if you've been in some of our classrooms, they're kind of tiny. And we, we had kids in there. And the way that our classrooms were set up, it was set up for collaboration. So we had desks pushed together, but purposefully because we wanted kids to face each other and talk. And now we've had to dismantle that. So we still have the six feet. We still have the challenge on the bus. So we've got some spatial issues that prevent us from having our buildings fully staffed and fully in instructional mode. And, you know, that's just where we are right now.
Dr. Gupta?
I see the need for a bigger plan, but I think this is a first step forward. So I thank Dr. Edwards for putting it together. I think it'll give us time to evaluate how this week goes and how next week goes. And we don't raise the expectations of our stakeholders too soon. And I think it'll make her reflect back. And if things are looking good, nothing's stopping us from bringing everybody back two weeks or a week from now. So I think this is a first step in the right direction. That's how I look at it.
Thank you, Doctors Nillis and Gupta. Any other board members with questions or discussion on the matter? We don't want to rush anything. Dr. Brennan?
I just want to agree with Dr. Gupta that I think one of the goals for this last, for this period of time was to give the school time to make sure that things were in place, particularly a mitigation plan. And as we remember from our presentation, Dr. Gately, that third core indicator is, is how are we doing with face masks, with hygiene, with hand washing, with disinfection? And I think that we're doing very well with that. And I think we've had time to do it. I think we've also had a little bit of time to have some other students come into the schools with special ed and childcare. Now we have the younger children come in. I think we're going step by step, which is, I think, what we intended. And ultimately, I'm sure we're all hoping that we're going to be open five days a week in the future. I agree with Dr. Gupta. This is our step number one, which I think we're trying to do in a very intentional way.
All right, and Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I mean, I also appreciate what has been shared by other members here, talking about the staging, you know, two days per cohort and so forth. But I guess I'm hearing Dr. Nillis also sort of ask, are we formulating that plan for these are the things that are going to take place? These are the boxes that we can check? And at that point, we can say, okay, we're ready for return to learn, in-person learning, five days a week? Is that what our staff is currently working on, sort of developing that, that plan and that checkbox? And if there is, can you share, is there any preliminary schedule of that? I know that's a dangerous thing because, you know, people, people immediately start to react and go, oh, okay, on this date, they're changing all this. And that's not the case. That would be, you know, if a perfect world, then we can check all the boxes and feel safe. But, you know, I think, I think what Dr. Nillis might be asking, he can, he can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think he's just kind of asking, is there a plan? Is that being put in place? And can that be shared?
So with regards to planning, first, let me say that for the staff, the teaching staff and the ones who are directly working with the children, I would say right now, they have about enough, if not too much, on their plate to just focus with coming, you know, coming from doing remote learning into in-person learning and some trying to do both and navigate that, particularly if you look at secondary schools where I'm a singleton subject. It's just me that teaches this. How am I going to manage this? So, yes, I appreciate the need for more planning. And one of the things that you heard is everybody wants to be involved in the discussion. So right now, to say, we still haven't experienced in-person learning, but we need to involve everybody in the discussion and get them talking about it. When they haven't experienced in-person learning, it's a little difficult to make that shift to this is what five days a week fully staff will look like. And partly because there's some other parameters for us. We have the six-foot distance. We have the CDC guidance. We have the insurance pieces that say if you decide that you're going to ignore six feet, three feet, whatever the distance is, and you're going to put more kids on the bus and you're going to put more kids in the classroom, there are lots of other factors that we also have to consider that at an administrative level, yes, we are working through. Has that filtered down to the actual staff? No, I'm not going to go on record and say, yes, teachers are talking about that right now because they're not. And what we want them to do is focus on the children. Today was about, really, it's week seven, but for some of our kids, it's day one. Social emotional health. How are you doing? That's what my, the bulk of my staff is focusing on right now, just caring for kids, caring for families. You heard all of the children and families talk about frustration and things like that. That is my number one concern right now is to really, let's relieve that frustration for our families. Let's relieve that for our staff while still moving forward. That being said, we are one of 132 school divisions that have the same concerns and issues. And yes, I was on multiple Zooms today. And one of them was with area superintendents and Commonwealth superintendents talking about what are the successes? What are the struggles? What are the next steps? So there are lots of discussion, there's lots of discussion about exactly what you're talking about. How do we get to fully staffing our schools back and fully having them with all of our kids? But we are in the midst of the pandemic, so we still have to be responsive to that, too.
Okay, I'm going to go with Ms. Morrison.
I think even when we have schools open for all students to return, we're going to have to remember that we're going to have families that still want remote learning. And to have all, as many students back in school and then to do remote, that's going to be a problem for some of our core subjects that have a single teacher. And I'm hearing teachers, our teachers have stepped up. They have, they say, no, I don't want another teacher to teach my kids. I will do both. I will make it work. So I think we're getting just lots of support from our teachers and the staff, all staff. The major thing for me is that we know transportation is a problem, that we are not going to be able to get all our kids back to school if we don't find a way to fix transportation. And that needs to be a major focus. Even transporting the kids we're doing now, we don't have enough to do. We can't take meals to families that need meals now because we're transporting kids. So we've got to put that at the top of our priority list. And we, I think we all agree that that's something that we've got to do.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison, Ms. Evans.
I agree with you on the transportation. But I do also want to reiterate, because I think a lot of people are saying, if the transportation is fixed, we could be in five days a week. We still have a six-foot distance rule within classrooms.
And one on bus.
Yeah. And so I think that until that, either we decide we're not going to follow the six distant, you know, six-foot rule, or it is lessened, I'm not sure we'll be in five days a week because I'm not sure it's feasible that we can be. I mean, I think that's the goal, but if we're going by these parameters, we're very limited when you look at the class size of the actual classroom. And if you're a middle school eighth-grade teacher and have 32 kids in your class, it's not possible at one time. So I think, I think, I just don't want the community to think, okay, if we fix the bus situation, it's going to fix everything. But that is the first step. I agree that we have to look at transportation. But I just don't want anybody clinging on that's the only thing we have to fix because that's not the only issue.
This is a very insightful board. Dr. Senhor?
I would also like to remind everybody that being a city school district, we are very different from the private schools and from the surrounding counties in that we are about 50% African-American and Hispanic, two populations that we know have greater risk and higher, and more complicated disease if they catch this. The other thing is, you're right, going on the six-foot distance. I mean, to go full five days a week. People need to understand that for us to do that, we would have to ignore the CDC guidelines. We're not going to have a vaccine for adults widely available till summer at best. And then I've read for children, a COVID vaccine is even further off because while fortunately, fewer children get this disease, it means there are fewer children to put in trials. And they have a very different immune response. I'm not an expert on this, but Dr. Brennan can back me up. It'll be a long time till they have any protection. So until that time, even if we had a million buses, we have to be responsible to our children, our demographics, the composition of our district. Because we are not like everybody else. So to compare us with everybody else is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. So just want to make sure we put that out there that for the foreseeable future, we're in this for the long haul. And it's discouraging now that we're in the colder weather and the trends have changed. They looked so good in December. I was really excited. But hopefully, we can reverse it again. We just need to remind everybody and-
Thank you, Dr. Senhor. Before I go back to Dr. Gupta and Dr. Nillis, Dr. Carter, did you want to weigh in on this?
Well, I think I would just like to hear what the presenters wanted to present. And I didn't know whether they would change our conversation or enhance it, but I would like to hear what they have to say before adding. But the comments are wonderful.
Dr. Gupta and then Dr. Nillis.
I echo Dr. Nillis's point that we need planning. But the problem is, we are in an uncharted territory. We never had this COVID thing there. But having said that, that doesn't, should not stop us from planning for buses, bus drivers, adequate bus drivers. We need to have them in place. In case we move in them, we cannot turn that thing overnight. So that planning should go forward. And then the second thing I wanted to say is, we have to be humane. I'm in support of bringing students back, but humane to the teachers who are at my age or older than me, who have underlying health conditions. And it puts them at risk being in the classroom. who have underlying health conditions, and it puts them at risk being in the classroom. So on one side, they got a paycheck. On the other side is a coffin, I'm sorry to say that, waiting in their mind. So how could we as a district be humane to those teachers, saying, we care about you, and we know that will not put you at risk?
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Dr. Nillis?
Yeah, my, my comment really was, I mean, I guess I'm going to vote in favor of this, this, I guess, the current plan. But it's just a couple of the baby steps, and we need to have, have some discussion about what it's going to look like long term. And hopefully, there could be a, I don't know, accelerated plan for bringing kids back. Maybe same kind of phasing, but bring pre-K through two back. And, and I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench in the works or exercise administration. There's a lot of work. There's a lot of issue. This is complicated, as I think everybody should be aware of from the discussion. I mean, it's really complicated. And we do want it to be safe for the staff, for the students. But I think it's clear experience around, around us that, I mean, there is a lot of anxiety about it. But I think also there's some favorable experiences, too, that if we're cautious and careful, and I think we, you're going to have to be aggressive in terms of quarantining or isolating as the appropriate cases, staff and students.
Thank you, Dr. Nillis. Ms. Morrison?
I'd like to go back to comments that my colleague Dr. Senna made when we first started talking about this. And that if the community wants us to get our kids back into school, then the community needs to step up and wear masks and take precautions and stay distance. Because it doesn't matter what we want, if the community is not, are not willing to do, the community is not willing to do this, we're not going to get kids back in school as fast as we want them to. And I'm, I'm seeing signs that they are relaxing.
All right. Dr. Edwards, has anything about the staff presentation that is germane to this discussion?
Not in terms of the voting and the dates, and I will, I will.
And we do wonder, we have reviewed all of this previously, so they're kind of two separate matters. But of course, the chair will yield to the pleasure of the board. But I think that we have enough information before us at this time, unless the board thinks otherwise.
Need to vote on these dates?
These dates.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So there is a motion and a second on the floor. We're still in discussion. Thank you, Dr. Brennan, for that. Is there any further discussion on the matter? We're hearing none. I know that Dr. Nillis stepped out, so I don't want to exclude him. But let's just go around the table and do it that way. Bill, can you just acknowledge whether you are for?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
James Coleman, yes. We'll come back to Dr. Nillis.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes, on the dates, date changes.
Okay, so the, the motion carries. Ms. Day, we're going to make sure that we record Dr. Nillis' vote also. We'll just come back to that and add to it. All right, motion carries. And we will now move into the information portion of this matter.
So, as I, as I stated, the staff, Ms. Pugh, I think Dr. Jordan is also available, just to give you some updates on what has been happening, how the first day went in terms of bringing back the pre-K to two. I will address, and I, Ms. Daniels' boss here is out there, too, and I know I saw Ms. Bon Gentry as well out there. And we can address some of the things that we're also doing for staff. Because we have what we're offering for students, what we're doing for staff and families and the community. So I'm going to invite Ms. Pugh up to start.
And Deputy Superintendent Pugh, just before you start your presentation, Dr. Nillis, would you like to record your vote, yea or nay for?
Yes. Thank you.
From nine to zero. Ms. Pugh?
Good evening, everybody. As you're well aware. Today, our pre-K through second grade cohort A, those that chose to come back into hybrid learning today, came into our schools this morning at about 9:35. It was all hands on deck. I was at an elementary school assisting as students were coming in and taking temperatures, greeting students. Each school, at the school that I was at, and I can assure you this happened at every elementary school, they were fully staffed. Teachers who, who students weren't coming in, the third through fifth grade teachers, were helping out. They were handing out breakfast. They were leading students to their classes. I did not experience a student who had any fear in their eyes or on their face, faces. They were all excited to be back in their schools with their teachers. So I commend everyone for all of their hard work and planning in the past couple of weeks to make this a reality. Our transportation has worked hard to get our students picked up on the buses. And as usual, yes, there were some glitches. Some students had to, you know, had to, the drivers had to go back and pick up students that they might have missed, or students might have, you know, been, some students were transported. Because we have students that are riding on the same bus to various schools. And so because this was their first time, we did experience some students who might have gotten off at the wrong school. But the bus drivers went right back and picked the students up. They were transported to the correct school. So everyone has worked hard, bus drivers, new to school nutrition workers, preparing breakfasts and lunches, our teachers getting their classrooms ready, all of the school staff, and welcoming and preparing the students and their buildings to be ready for, for the return to school. Any questions?
Dr. Gupta?
Just news in advance has posted very nice pictures online for Heritage Elementary School today.
Yes, and I did, after I left the school that I was supporting this morning, I was there from about 8:30 to about 10:30 or so, 10:15. And then I did go to Heritage, and students were in their classrooms. And then I went over to Perrymont Elementary, and the principal there led me through some classrooms. And I watched students who were participating and learning their letters and their numbers, and students who were talking about social distancing and watching videos and, and learning about, you know, keeping their face masks on, their face coverings on. So students were well engaged, and teachers were truly excited to have their students back in their rooms for learning.
Wow. Dr. Carter?
I just want, and I can, I should say this, well, what have you learned from bringing the first group, pre-K to two, back to make the process smoother, especially with like transportation and the cause, as to what cohorts they're going to be in?
You know, I think we've learned a lot that planning is key, and it takes all hands on deck to get there. We've had lots of collaboration across, across departments. So the IT department has been very supportive of our transportation department. Our new school nutrition department has been working with transportation as well. So I think it's just been a lot of collaboration. We are several steps ahead for three through six and seven through 12 in terms of being able to notify our parents about the cohorts that they're in and their transportation, bus routes and times. So we are ahead of the game for those two groups coming in.
Any other question? Dr. Gupta?
So have you heard from any teachers who are concerned because of their underlying health conditions? That they may be hesitant in doing in-person instruction?
I personally have not heard from teachers, but I do know that there are some teachers who have expressed that concern to their principals. And we do have a process in place for them to express that. And so I believe that there is someone who's going to, to present that to you and just a little bit about how we're handling those concerns of teachers.
So I can jump in there, since you did ask me that question, Dr. Gupta. And one of the things, you know, our, our theme has been lead with care. And that's what we are absolutely, you know, that is our first response and what we are trying to do in, in this difficult time. So our staff, our teachers, it's not just teachers, it's, it's staff. The first thing that they should do, and, you know, we, we've been talking about this, and Ms. Bon Gentry has actually worked a little bit on this early on when we were having staff that were reporting COVID symptoms and things like that, is the first step is with their immediate supervisor, to have that conversation with their immediate supervisor, whether that's their department supervisor, their school building principal, or chair, or assistant principal, if the principal is not available. Ms. Cardwell, who you met earlier, along with the HR department, has a tracking system. There's forms that go along with that so that we can keep records. So it's not just a, or a verbal conversation, but there's actually some record keeping. And depending upon the personal situation, then you can imagine that we try to keep these conversations to a small amount of people. This is not a group thing that we put out in a Google Doc and say, everybody, just take a look at everybody's information. It's very personal. So she, in the HR department, they do work with the building administrator or the department administrator to, to make those decisions. One of the first things that, when we were working with risk management and the attorneys is, you know, the option for remote learning, you first start with can your position, by position, does your position allow you to work remotely? In other words, does your position, can you do your position from home? And you can imagine in a school division that there are some positions where you can, some teaching positions. But it's very difficult if you're a bus driver to drive the bus from home. So that is the first part of the conversation. And a couple, probably over a month ago, I shared with the board a flow chart that talked about how some of those decisions would be made. And at the bottom of that flow chart were about eight different options for staff if teller, teleworking is not an option. The other thing that our building principals are looking at, and one of the reasons why it was real important for us to get information from families and why when that information changes, if you can imagine on a team where there are three second grade teachers, and you have kids who are requesting in-person learning and kids requesting remote, knowing how many will allow us to make those decisions a little easier. So if I, as a second grade teacher, I am, I'm real, I really would like to work remotely, what is my assignment? Is it second grade? Do you have enough students that need remote learning, second grade, in my building? Maybe I might be servicing another building, or maybe I might be servicing another grade if my certification allows. So there's a lot of moving parts that go along with, even if your position can be, you can work remotely, what is the student need and how do we match you with that student need? And then how do we monitor? That is a whole nother, another conversation. But to answer your question, yes, there are, there are options for staff. But to be truthful, I can't sit here and say, every person who collects a paycheck from Lynchburg City Schools has the opportunity to work from their house. That's not true. It's not feasible. So it's got to be on a case-by-case basis.
And we, we do trust in that case-by-case basis that what is best for all parties involved is seriously being looked at. And so thank you for responding to that, Dr. Edwards. Any further questions, this portion?
So if, if I could just ask Ms. Bon Gentry to come up, because she's, she's been my partner in crime in terms of connections to the Virginia Department of Health. And you heard Dr. Gailey talk a little bit about the contact tracing that they do. But what I want you to know is through our HR department and our student services department with Latanya Brown, who is not here, but, but Ms. Bon Gentry does represent that department, we do our own internal contact tracing as best as we can. We have those conversations. You heard Dr. Gailey talk about having people call you back, and he's trying to reach out to them. And we do that with our staff. And our nurse coordinator, Andrea Bryant, does the bulk of that, and Bon Gentry supervises Ms. Bryant. So I just want to give you like just 30 quick seconds to talk about what Ms. Bryant does and what happens out of your office.
Okay. Very quickly, we realized that contract tracing was going to be very important to us. And so we established a referral form, basically, that our school nurses can fill out should they be notified by a staff member that they've tested positive or potentially could be positive. And that information goes directly to a Google spreadsheet that we keep just personally so that we know what our numbers would look like and how to track and try and intervene with people when we need to. We've done the similar thing for school nurses, for our students, as our students come back to school. School nurses can also create or fill in a referral form for us, which, again, goes just to three specific people so that that information can be shared and we can keep a record of students. And we have a direct line to Dr. Gailey's office. We talk to him whenever we need to, sometimes on a daily basis. And he has always been very receptive to answering whatever questions we have and working with us in whatever situations we find we need his support or information for. So we feel pretty confident that we've put together, at least initially, a really good system of keeping track and trying to make sure that we can do the best job we can of protecting our students and staff.
And part of that is why you see a stepwise approach to bringing students back. You saw us in August break back full staff. So we had our building, if you look at a building as capacity, we had full capacity of adults in the building. And then we had some of our athletes who were mostly outdoors, some in the weight room. So we had some students back in with that adult capacity. Then we brought back some students with disabilities. So we increased the capacity of adults and students in the same building while our departments, our internal departments are monitoring COVID in LCS, in the LCS community. And now we're starting to bring back pre-K to two students. And again, we want to monitor COVID in our LCS community to see how we can manage that. And prior to this, we didn't have a COVID staff. We didn't hire any additional contact tracers. All of this is existing folks who have taken on these responsibilities to do these things and monitor and follow up and make the phone calls and talk to staff members and any, I think, one student, I might have one student, who has tested positive for COVID. And as Dr. Gailey said, it's not if, it's when. So we want to be very cautious as we do this going forward. And I know parents were concerned, like, what will happen if? Like, what will happen if there is a positive case? And what I want to reassure our, our community is, we've already been practicing contact tracing. We've already had systems in place. We already have that relationship with, with VDH and making those decisions about whether or not, you know, to quarantine an office, a department, or in this case, now we're looking at a classroom. One of the concerns, again, going forward, will be staffing. Because if we do get in a quarantine situation where we have to say to staff and students to stay at home, that may present some challenges if a staff member is home, and then we have in-person instruction, and we have to get substitutes. And I would say behind bus drivers, if teachers were to tell you what they do and how many times they have to cover classes during their prep period, because there's a sub shortage as well as the bus driver shortage. So it is a systemic problem.
Any further questions? Ms. Evans?
Well, I don't know, I actually had some talking points I wrote down about return to learn. So I don't know if now's the time to do that or at the end of the board meeting, but they're really just about return to learn.
I'd be very interested in hearing them.
Okay, well, I mean, first of all, I just wanted to point out a thank you to everyone downtown. This is a massive, getting the cohorts together, doing the bussing, doing everything. And I also wanted to say to the teachers, I see what you're doing. I see the work you're putting in. And I just want them to understand, not for a second, that we don't believe their kids are getting quality education. I want to make that perfectly clear. If anybody says that, we don't believe it. I see it every day. I see the education that's coming out. So I hated that that's a message from some of our community members. That is not a message from this board member. I've been very impressed with their, what they're doing. I don't like the idea that the teachers feel like they did not know what was coming. As a board member, I feel like we've been very vocal at each meeting and each work session saying, this is where we're going. If we can come back before nine weeks, we are coming back. And so I've gotten emails from parents at times saying, what, what are y'all doing? We have, this is not new. If you go back and listen to every meeting we have, we talked about every meeting when we were coming back. This has been our goal. And the other thing that I kept hearing from the community after the decision was made to come back in the city council meeting was, you know, that there, we were really forced to make a decision. to make a decision based off a group of one people in the community. And I just want to make it perfectly clear that that absolutely is not, not one part of that is true. We are nine board members that do nothing but vote based on the best thing for children, the best thing for teachers, and the best thing for our families. Just because somebody has an opinion and we don't choose to go that route, it doesn't mean we didn't hear them. We hear you and it, we very much appreciate your input into Lynchburg City Schools. It doesn't mean we're going to choose what you would like us to do. That doesn't mean we don't hear you. There are 7,700 children that we're listening to, not what's right for your family. We have to look at everybody. So I just want it out there in the community that there is not a certain group, a certain group of people that are pushing our decisions. There are nine of us making these decisions based on the best thing for the students of Lynchburg and David. That's, that's all it comes down to. And I just want that to be very clear.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Your talking points ooze with the truth and thank you for them. Anyone else? Dr. Senha?
I just have to second that, that no one group can claim credit or victory when we're doing exactly what we said we were doing. I mean, the goal is to eventually get back to five days a week, everybody in the classroom and back to the old normal. We'd all love to do that. So yeah, to claim victory about the progression that we're on as if they convinced us to do something that we were already going to do is just ridiculous. So thank you for reminding us of that.
All right, Dr. Edwards, are there additional staff members to present?
I don't know. Dr. Jordan, did you want to share anything?
I'll always do something.
I'll keep it short. I just wanted you to know how we felt today when we saw them. I don't even know if I can tell you without crying. Watching mamas drive up with their babies and they trust us. I was at Desi this morning and there were so many excited faces and I won't mimic it because, because it's not very ladylike, but a kindergartner drove up with his shoe out the window and he was trying to show us his new shoes. Today was, you know, it was week seven, but it was day one for them. And they, a lot of them had never been in the buildings and they had never met their teachers in real life and the joy and the butterflies. I was so nervous at 8:45 this morning and I'm an adult, I'm a grown up. And even the grownups were nervous. So all the feelings this morning and that the community trusted us and the teachers were excited. So it was just remembering our why. We've worked really hard to get here and kids got to walk back into the buildings again after seven months. It made a huge difference and I'm so thankful that parents have a choice because some parents will choose remote and we will continue to honor that. So it was just amazing. I want to go back out on Thursday because I can't wait to see more first days. And if you have a chance, go out and see it for yourself. I had to turn around twice because I'm a crier and I had to turn around because I was going to be the one crying and they weren't crying this morning. They were so excited. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jordan. If there are no other questions or discussion on this matter concerning I, one, return to learn update, then we have dispatch of our action item. We've heard from our staff, we are living with COVID and I think that we are doing a sensational job. With that being said, unless there's an objection, I'm going to ask that we would take a break for five minutes and reconvene to conduct our new business and other comments at the end.
All right. I don't mind. Thank you. Bye.
What Mr. Harvey said previously is that we had presented this listing. It has to be one-time expenditures. So we presented this listing. Our fund balance was $4,107,119.25. Of that, $675,474.25 is restricted and that is restricted for the textbook reserves. We are required by the state to, to spend it on that purpose as well as the local match piece. If you recall, we were in the middle of a textbook adoption and that was put on pause during the COVID. So if we had not experienced the pandemic, that would have not been in your fund balance number. So the remaining is unrestricted and it is due. We, we did institute a spending freeze when this happened because of the uncertainty of the revenue. And then when the revenue came in and then as well as that annual, Medicaid annual costs proceeds that came in at the end of June. So the unrestricted is 3.4 million and we have provided a list. This is a list that was presented at the financial committee meeting of one-time expenditures. A lot of the items are related. I do have Mr. Gasky here if you have any questions on those. Yes, sir.
All right, here, Dr. Gupta.
Thank you very much. And you know, I, I asked for bonus last time and I fully advocate to give employees bonus. My question is where the thousand dollar number came from because the city gave 1,700. We are giving 1,000 and assume, it looks like based on these numbers, you have about 1,485 employees in FTEs to calculate this number around that. So could you explain to this public where, why 1,000, why not 900, why not 1,500?
We often, we collaborate with the city. We try to be respectful with what they had presented. When we had initially spoke with the city council and we were going through the budget discussions, we had said that as a group we would go back in October and each side would reassess their situation and look at doing step increases. We're not there yet. We have so many uncertainties at this point. The city did go ahead because they had the ability to use their CARES money, which we don't have the ability. So as much as, you know, it would, when I first started out, I was looking at $1,700. But to a lot of our employees, as much as, you know, they want this, they also want the step increase. And so we backed it down because our hope is that once we have the December update of the CALP tool, once we have some more knowns as far as the ADM, also when we speak, when you hear next, at the end of the month, the health insurance consultant, you know, we want to see where, where our rates are going to be on the employer's side. So we want to get some of those variables out of way, out of the way. But we didn't want to put ourselves back ourselves into, we gave a $1,700 bonus and then we did the step increase. We thought about doing the step increase, but the step increase isn't going to give everybody something because they're on the odd and even years. So we wanted to do something, you know, to show appreciation to everybody that has stepped up during this pandemic.
Yes, Dr. Gupta?
The CIP for 710,000, is it allocated for a particular purpose or it's just an amount there and you'll decide later on where to use it?
That is a whole other point. We are, we come into the board with the CIP plan. We have been working on that and so it is not designated for a specific area. I mean, they have, you have the capital improvement plan, but we're looking at, is that the best use for the funds?
That's a placeholder funding, just sitting there. Third question I had is for the
All right, we will reconvene. Thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to have that brief break. And we are now going to move into our new business, item J. And there are several items under new business, and we're going to take them each one at a time. I'm now going to ask Dr. Edwards to help us to appreciate the annual required public notifications. And we do want to thank Barbara for alerting us and Ms. Day regarding this important information that simply needs to be shared publicly. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely. So many of this is already on our website, or people have already received information about it. But each year, we are required to notify the public about several different things. And what we did this year, we had not done this in the past, is put an exhaustive list of everything, along with either links to our website or the relevant policies, so that our community, if they wanted to know about our child nutrition programs, there's a link there, there's a link to the Student Services Department, which talks about counseling, there's a link to our fees, our emergency procedures, and on and on and on. But we want to make this part of something that we do each year when we start school, so we'll probably do it maybe earlier in August, and just so that we meet that annual notification. But we also give our community members, our family members, our staff, the actual links to where everything is, instead of sending them individually and having them receive multiple things. So it's for information only.
Okay. Any questions concerning the numerous notifications that we needed to make sure that we brought before the board tonight into the public? All right. With nothing heard further on that, we will now move to item J2, which will create a robust discussion, I'm sure. And Dr. Edwards, if you can lead us in our fund balance return.
Absolutely. So Ms. Laconic is probably going to pop in here at any moment. But while she's coming in, let me just take you back in time. Way back in probably June, we were trying to predict what our fund balance would be. Part of that prediction was not, part of it was on what we could save and what we wouldn't spend, but part of it was on revenue. And revenue we anticipated that we wouldn't get, which would lower our fund balance or lower our prediction of what would be available. And at that time, we were very concerned about sales tax, we were very concerned about lottery. We talked to you guys about that being about 30% of our revenue budget from the state end. And there were a lot of unknowns. And we were very cautious as we were advised by, you know, other finance directors in public school and just our colleagues, and just the lay of the land back then was, you know, if not 15, 20, 30, upwards to 50%, don't assume you're going to get it. And that was the path that we took. The city similarly took a path, and I remember Donna mentioning that when she did her presentation a couple of weeks ago, saying that they were bracing for a hit as well. And the hit that they felt was not as bad of a hit as they thought it might be, but they were cautious nonetheless. And we find ourselves in the same position. So as we look at fund balance, one of the things that we need to be considering is how much revenue did we think we weren't going to get that we actually ended up receiving? And then also, what was COVID savings? And I want to just refresh your memory. Our first estimate of COVID savings due to not having students in the building in the spring and some of the shutdowns that we did was about $1.5 million. And if you remember, in the spring, the city also reduced our budget by what was almost our COVID savings, about $1.5 million. So this, our fund balance is looking at projections over and above that. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Laconic to do a little bit, and we'll tag team it and answer your questions.
All right, thank you. So what Mr. Harvey said previously is that we had presented this listing. It has to be one-time expenditures. So we presented this listing. Our fund balance was $4,107,119.25. Of that, $675,474.25 is restricted. And that is restricted for the textbook reserves. We are required by the state to spend it on that purpose, as well as the local match piece. If you recall, we were in the middle of a textbook adoption, and that was put on pause during the COVID. So if we had not experienced the pandemic, that would have not been in your fund balance number. So the remaining is unrestricted, and it is due. We did institute a spending freeze when this happened because of the uncertainty of the revenue. And then when the revenue came in, and then as well as that Medicaid annual cost proceeds that came in at the end of June. So the unrestricted is 3.4 million. And we have provided a list. This is a list that was presented at the Finance Committee meeting of one-time expenditures. A lot of the items are related. I do have Mr. Gasky here, if you have any questions on those. Yes, sir.
All right here, Dr. Gupta.
Thank you very much. You know, I asked for bonus last time, and I fully advocate to give employees bonus. My question is where that $1,000 number came from? Because the city gave 1,700, we are giving 1,000. And it looks like based on these numbers, you have about 1,485 employees in FTEs to calculate this number around that. So could you explain to this public where, why 1,000, why not 900, why not 1,500?
We often collaborate with the city. We try to be respectful with what they had presented. When we had initially spoke with the city council, when we were going through the budget discussions, we had said that as a group, we would go back in October, and each side would reassess their situation and look at doing step increases. We're not there yet. We have so many uncertainties at this point. The city did go ahead because they had the ability to use their CARES money, which we don't have the ability. So as much as, you know, it would, when I first started out, I was looking at $1,700. But to a lot of our employees, as much as, you know, they want this, they also want the step increase. And so we backed it down because our hope is that once we have the December update of the CALP tool, once we have some more knowns as far as the ADM, also when we speak, when you hear next, at the end of the month, the health insurance consultant, you know, we want to see where our rates are going to be on the employer's side. So we want to get some of those variables out of the way. But we didn't want to put ourselves back into, we gave a $1,700 bonus, and then we did the step increase. We thought about doing the step increase, but the step increase isn't going to give everybody something because they're on the odd and even years. So we wanted to do something, you know, to show appreciation to everybody that has stepped up during this pandemic.
Yes, Dr. Gupta?
The CIP for $710,000, is it allocated for a particular purpose? Or it's just an amount there, and you'll decide later on where to use it?
That is a whole other point. We are, we come into the board with the CIP plan. We have been working on that. And so it is not designated for a specific area. I mean, they have, you have the capital improvement plan, but we're looking at, is that the best use for the funds?
That's a placeholder funding, just sitting there. Third question I had is for the Wi-Fi, I mentioned to you, the HUD Authority is interested in collaborating with Lynchburg City Schools in putting Wi-Fi in our buses, as long as you put them in HUD communities. So have you guys heard anything from the Housing Authority in the city of Lynchburg? They're offered to collaborate with us?
They're working with Ethel on that, the director of the housing, Ethel Reeves.
Ethel Reeves, they're working with?
She's been in contact, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
She's been in contact with Ethel, the new director of housing, so.
So they're going to work to put more Wi-fis in our buses?
In areas where there, where people can actually go to get them. But we did say we want Wi-Fi on the three new buses.
So how much does it cost to put a Wi-Fi in one bus, you know?
No idea.
I didn't have that information. They're working with Ethel Reeves. Was it shared on a committee, or?
Dr. Gupta, make sure you, who are you directing your questions?
I'm asking Ms. Morrison, where would that information share, what Ms. Reeves working with them?
Where was that information shared? I asked Ethel, and she said that she had spoken with her three telephone calls.
Ms. Reeves serves on the Human Collaborative with the city. So she's, she works with city personnel on multiple projects, not just that one.
When we initially presented the fund balance request at the Finance Committee meeting, that was one of the additions that they had, changes that they had suggested and recommended, was that for the three replacement buses to include that Wi-Fi equipment, the estimate that I had received, it was about $1,800 a bus. But that was just for the equipment, it wasn't for the ongoing subscription fees.
I just want to add, and I know it's in the agenda, but I just want to make sure that we are all, for timeline purposes, the Finance Committee met on September 22nd, and the information that is in your board agenda reflects our proposal on September 22nd. And then after that, on October 1st, Kim, Steve, and I met with the city manager, Donna, and Kent, and had a conversation regarding our fund balance. And we wanted to hear what they were thinking. So what you have in front of you is what we discussed. They shared with us an additional, almost like a swap-out proposal. And I want, we didn't want to change what we presented to the Finance Committee because we didn't want to confuse anybody and bring something that wasn't discussed at Finance. But if you look at your list, and let me just emphasize one more time, that the proposed bonus, which is the first thing on our list, is $1,000 for full-time employees, and it will be prorated for part-time employees. And we have to remember that our nutrition program is self-funded, but we are including them in this as well. So we too honor all of our employees. We know that they've been working tremendously hard. So regardless of how they're funded, we felt like everybody needed to be in this proposal for a bonus. But if you go down to the bottom of your list, the second from the bottom, you will see that we have put in an additional $200,000 for disinfectant and PPE for our fund balance request. And what we're learning, and that's another one of those factors, we want to see how it goes, is, you know, once we brought all the adults back into the room, we started noticing, oh, we're going through wipes and things like that. And now we have kids back, and we have to clean equipment and things like that. So we had an additional $200,000. Well, in talking with the city, and I think this is a really good idea, and if you recall, one of the first things that we talked about with the city schools task force, going back to our Sandusky Elementary School, was facilities. So the city would like us to think about doing a full-blown facility study of at minimum all of our elementary buildings. And possibly, as Mr. Gasky brought up, we've got some older buildings that aren't elementary buildings that we may also want to include in that study. And what they proposed is a swap. They have some CARES money that they would be willing to allow us to get our PPE from the CARES money, because that has to be spent right away. We know a facility study won't be spent by the end of this current school year, I'm sorry, year. So they would take that $200,000 that they have and buy our, purchase our PPE and our disinfectant. And they recommended that we leave that 200 or 200 for a facility study. And that being said, that goes with the bottom one, because, you know, as we sat in the meeting, we all smiled, and we knew that there would be a question about the next gym. So one of the things that we decided to bring it up for you, because we know, we know that there's going to be like, gym five, gym six. So as Kim said, the capital improvement projects, they're undisclosed. That $700,000 is undisclosed. That $200,000, we're recommending that we change COVID and make it a facility study, put that money in for a facility study. But that brings up the question about the gym. And one of the things that the city shared with us is if we do a facility study, and depending upon what that facility study yields, we need to be mindful about whether or not we build a gym in a facility that may, a facility study may result that we do something different. If we go back to our original Sandusky replacement plan, it was to build a bigger elementary school. That was the old plan. We haven't crafted any new plan yet. But I did want this board to know that the three of us did mention the gym, and we recognize that there's capital money out there, and that the board still may want to move forward with any plans that they had with that.
Dr. Gupta?
So I like the idea of doing the facility planning. So does it put a pause to other CIP projects we have in the pipeline till the report comes out? That's my question number one. I've been advocating, and you're right, for Heritage Elementary School, because if you look at that area that is developing, department complexes, a lot of younger kids are coming. It has maybe the largest population of your elementary school kids in that heritage. And so they deserve a gym like any other school. So we're building at other places and leaving, not intentionally, unintentionally, heritage out. And that's why.
Yep. We absolutely understood exactly where you were coming from. That's why we raised it as well. And one of the things, and I'll let Mr. Gasky come up and talk a little bit about, you know, when Dr. Copeland was here, we had a long-range facility plan. And we kept, I like to call it the slide, because we kept moving projects and sliding them, and moving projects and sliding them. One of the things that we're all excited about is working with Reed and his team to really evaluate all of those facilities, long-term facility plan. And just keep in mind that some of the things, we had a, well, if you don't do this, then you might have to fix that. And that is not my area of expertise. This and that is probably about as detailed as I get. So I'm going to let Mr. Gasky talk a little bit more about some of the things that are on the horizon.
As far as, we're trying to develop next year's CIP. You know, that's a five-year rolling plan. So as one year drops off, you add another one. So we're actually looking at '22 through '26. Plan for next year, which would be approved by the school board and city council in this budget year, I have not had a chance, and Kim and I have not had really a chance to look at all the specific projects. We know we don't have anything major as far as roof projects. We do have some mechanical, electrical, and plumbing that we want to do. But then looking on, and in meeting with the, with the city folks the other day, we've got some kind of an agreement there that, right now, the new Sandusky Middle, I believe, is, I mean, excuse me, New Sandusky Elementary, is on the CIP for 2025. And in our discussions with the city, we came to somewhat of an agreement, a gentleman's agreement, I guess you'd call it, that that will not move further out. Now hopefully, it might move a year or two up, but. So what we're looking at now is 2025 being the target date to start construction on Sandusky Elementary, with our planning for the interim years keeping that into account. Meaning, we probably would have a very lean CIP plan for '22 through '24, so that we can hopefully build a new school in '25. So that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Gasky. That's, that's good information to have before the board. I believe that, Dr. Ellis?
When was the last time we had a real facilities study done?
We had, okay, 1990. They did a full facility study, it looks like, of all schools. I have a copy of that report, it's all yellow and, I think it's on mini-grab paper. And then in 1998, we did the secondary school, in which we looked at the five secondary schools. And that's the plan, where Lincoln Elementary was, I mean, what, Lincoln, I'm getting my schools mixed up. Lincoln Middle, and it was renovated, EC Glass was renovated, New Sandusky Middle, and then the new Heritage. That was all part of that plan of 98. Dunbar, at that point, had already been through about six years of renovations, done during the summers, one little phase at a time. So we did not, that was not revisited at that point. I would like and feel strongly that we should be, if we do a new facility study, that Dunbar should be included in that. Because, and also, what you need to remember, that is, in the early 90s, well, through the 90s, we did a lot of elementary school renovations. But those renovations are not 30 years old. It's time to start the cycle over again. So that's why I was excited when the city, city manager proposed doing a facility study. I got very excited, because we need a plan. We need to have a 20, 30-year plan, putting all, laying out all of this facility renovations, new buildings, and whatever we need. So like I said, I thought it was very, very exciting that they proposed that.
Dr. Gupta?
You may agree, we have significant deferred maintenance needs in the LCS system.
I'm sorry?
Significant deferred maintenance needs.
Yes, so yes, we have deferred maintenance. Whether I would categorize it as more classified as significant, I guess, this is recent. My job is to keep them maintained, I, you know. But yes, we do have deferred maintenance, and we have buildings that are starting to show their age again, even though they were renovated in the 90s.
Dunbar is a classic example. Is it, if you take the ADA into account, it may not come out in compliance with ADA access.
There is some of that too, yeah. And we also need to remember, we have three elementaries that were never renovated. I mean, we have Sandusky Elementary, obviously. We also have Lincoln Elementary and Paul Monroe. But other than some piecemeal renovations to keep the buildings up and running, we haven't put any effort into them at all.
All right, Ms. Morrison?
So what we're voting on tonight includes a $1,000 bonus for every full-time employee, including nutrition worker.
Large and part, yes.
And prorated if you're part-time. But it is also our intent to revisit reinstituting the step program as soon as we possibly can.
We will get to that later, yes. Dr. Carter?
I just, Susan just got in front of me, but yes.
Sorry.
You just took what I said. I just wanted to reiterate that we are committed to that step increase. When we started this, that's what we wanted to continue to see that happen. And thank you, Mrs. Laconic, for really looking at that. The bonus is wonderful. I think the staff will appreciate that, and it's just a token of what we were able to do for them at this time.
Dr. Gupta?
I just, I know $1,000 is wonderful, but there's still, one thing is bothering me is, our bus drivers, as the lady said, were in the forefront with the nutrition staff. So many of them may not be full-time, so they may get only a piecemeal of the bonus. I know there's no way workaround, you have to be fair and equitable across the system. But these people were in the forefront of coronavirus epidemic. When all of us were in our homes, they were delivering meals to our kids. And many of them may be part-time, so depending on how many hours they're working, they may get one-half or one-fourth of this bonus.
Dr. Brenner?
Mr. Chair, it's okay, the board would like to make a motion to approve the requested use of 2019, 2020 fund balance with the correction that was stated as far as the PPE being required for facility plan.
So that is a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Carter, the discussion, and again, we would be swapping out the COVID disinfectant and PPE for the facility study, which would handle our elementary schools and possibly Dunbar as well. Mr. Harvey?
That was the motion that I was.
Okay, very good. And any further discussion? I do want us to please not forget Dr. Edwards' very well-delivered explanation as to the difference between our utilization of CARE monies versus what the city was able to do. And so I think that's important. Any further discussion?
This is operating dollars, not CAREs money.
Right. All right, then, if hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, and the fund balance return has been approved with the correction. And I hope you all can appreciate that. We wanted to leave it as it was with the Finance Committee and then bring that to you in the manner in which it was tonight. That now moves us to item J3. And we're going to see a few of these items dealing with committee approvals. And so this is coming to us for action with the Equity Task Force. Dr. Edwards?
Yep, absolutely. The next three items are the Advisory Committees, the Equity Task Force, Health Advisory, and CTE Advisory Committees, all which are formed by your policies. You previously approved the Special Education Advisory Committee, and now these are the new ones. I do believe their meetings are scheduled. I know Equity and Health Advisory, first meeting will be next month. So we need to quickly get folks approved, so that we can begin to work with it.
Can you come to any of these meetings?
Can you come? I'll put them there in the, when I do the weekly update, you'll have dates and times.
All right, I'm going to ask that we would just approve these one at a time, and not ask the superintendent to further comment on either of them. Regarding J3, what is the pleasure of the board?
I move that we accept the names as approved.
Remove by Dr. Carter, is there a second? Ms. Morrison, second. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries to approve the use of those names for the Equity Task Force. We will now move to J4 with the Health Advisory Board Committee. What is the pleasure of the board? Membership of the Health Advisory Board Committee.
I move that we approve, I like Dr. Gigan's name, she's very active, and she was on that. And it's, it's her task force, so. I hope in future, we may involve some PAs and NPs as the advance. They'll be the forefront of the care, in terms of primary care, so, but I move that we approve it.
Move to approve J4, is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Carter, a question by Dr. Brennan.
Just a quick comment. I think that for all of these, by our policy, they're supposed to report to us annually. And I would just ask that we kind of fit that into our schedule in the future. And I think particularly the Health Advisory Board, as far as what we're going through with COVID, I think it'd be great to have their input into what we're dealing with. So I just have that one request for this.
Thank you for sharing that, Dr. Brennan, very well stated. And we do want to engage all of these groups, and we show they are, and we'll do more. All right, any other questions or discussion concerning J4? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and motion carries, and we have now approved the Health Advisory Board Committee. The Career Technical Education Advisory Committee, that is J5. And you see the names, and all of these committees are replete with wonderful names. You can see all of them there. What is the pleasure of the board concerning the Career Technical Advisory Committee's approval?
I move that we approve the memberships for the Career Technical A move that we approve the memberships for the Career Technical Education Advisory Committees for this year.
Thank you for the motion, Dr. Carter, is there a second? Ms. Morrison, you want to second it?
Yes, I second.
All right, any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, and we have approved the Career Technical Advisory Committee. That now moves us to item J six, which is the Capital Improvement Plan. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely, and I'll have Ms. Gasky just quickly update you on what's going on at Bass Elementary.
A few minutes ago, we were talking about future CIP projects, and I was talking about the current one. The Capital Improvement Plan includes six hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and two cents, in total funding of which five hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-five...
And two cents has been designated for construction for the replacement of the classroom, unit ventilators, and air handlers at William Marvin Bass Elementary School. The City of Lynchburg Office of Procurement helped us with the bidding process, and we received bids for the HVAC equipment replacement. The school administration recommends that the low bidder, Valley Boiler and Mechanical Incorporated, based on their bid of five hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. All bids received are listed on the attached bid tabulation, and we are requesting approval just this evening. Just to give you a recap of what the project is, all the classrooms that Bedford, I mean, I don't know what's going on tonight. At Bass, our, it's thirty-year-old equipment. It's, these are the unit ventilators in each classroom that provide heating and cooling. And so it's on the air distribution side. And what we want to do is just replace them all.
Thank you so much. Chair will entertain a motion as stated for item J six. A move by Dr. Gupta? The second by Dr. Carter, we now have discussion, Dr. Brennan? Okay, good, Dr. Nellis?
I have a question. On these types of replacements, is there any consideration given to trying to have common equipment among, installed among the differing buildings to try to...
Yes.
With airports and inventory and...
Standardization?
Yes.
Yes, we do try. The procurement laws say we have to give some competitive competition, or some competition in there. So we usually spec around one manufacturer for all our projects, the same manufacturer for all our projects. But we allow two other manufacturers to also submit. That's right in our bidding documents. And then, but then when it goes, so when it goes out then for bid, the contractors that bid basically have a choice of three manufacturers. So most of our equipment that we have in our buildings are on the, our preferred manufacturer, but we have equipment from all three, actually.
But you are, you are constrained by the...
We do limit it to just the three manufacturers.
You are constrained by the procurement law?
Yes.
In that regard?
Any further questions or discussion on this matter? All right, if not, then all those in favor of this motion to embrace the Capital Improvement Plan for William Marvin Bass Elementary School as stated, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gass, thank you, Dr. Edwards. Now we will have the next several items under new business, under J, pertaining to our ongoing fiscal agent responsibility. And so, Dr. Edwards, if you would.
Absolutely, so as Dr. Coleman stated, these are our fiscal agent sort of flow-through responsibilities. And each of these individual organizations has prepared a budget, submitted it to Ms. Lakonic, and it is up for your approval. So the first one is the CVC, CVGS, sorry, budget. Would you like to add anything?
We need to cover it all.
Okay.
Approve that we continue to be their fiscal agent and to administer their budget in the amount of one million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
There have been concerns in the past. Questions, Dr. Gupta?
They're all pretty standard, so I don't know the rules. Could we combine all these from seven through twelve, or do we have to go through?
Time would certainly applaud that, but I'm thinking we probably need to go through each one. Dr. Nellis?
So because we're just the fiscal agent, we're not, we don't have any liability with their particular budget. Just, you know, if the governor's school overspends...
They do have fund balance that they can fall back on, and we still, we do not manage. We are just their fiscal agent, and we work with the directors, and they report to their board at their regularly scheduled meetings, their financial situation.
I just, that was, I just wanted the public to be aware of.
Very, thank you for that, Dr. Nellis, very well said. And of course, all of our board members understand that and continue to have deeper understandings of that. What is the pleasure of the board concerning our fiscal agent responsibility for the Central Virginia Governor's School for Science and Technology?
A move that we, or accept the recommendation.
Move by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Brennan? Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. We now move to item eight, the Pauline F. Maloney Step with Lynx Program.
This is...
Discussion on that? Dr. Brennan?
I would like to make a motion to approve the Pauline Maloney Step with Lynx Program budget for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Carter. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, and we're grateful to continue to do that. Item eight, item nine, the STEM Academy. Any thoughts?
I move to approve the STEM Academy budget.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis, it's been moved by Dr. Nellis, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Carter, that we would continue our fiscal agent responsibilities with the STEM Academy.
Should I amend that and rephrase that? Say, I move that, that we, I approve that we serve as the fiscal agent for the STEM Academy.
That we serve as the fiscal agent for the STEM Academy. We certainly accept that. And that was seconded by Dr. Carter. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. And now brings us to item ten, the Law Regional School.
And I move that we are the fiscal agent for the Law Regional School, and we do make sure that we don't overspend.
Thank you for your great service, Dr. Carter, in making that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Morrison, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion for fiscal agent responsibility for Law Regional School indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. This may or may not be a new one for some of you, eleven and twelve, but Turning Point Academy, we have that before us, and that's a name change, but we've been dealing with that. Any, what is the pleasure of the board?
I move to approve we serve as the fiscal agent for the Turning Point Academy.
Thank you, Dr. Nellis, having moved second. Dr. Brennan, any questions or discussion? Hearing none from board members, we will now call for the vote. All those in favor of J eleven, Turning Point Academy, fiscal agent, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. And now, final piece for today is the Blue Ridge Regional Jail Authority Special Education Program. Dr. Edwards, do we need to comment on that at all?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Is there, is the pleasure of the board in terms of making a motion?
A move that we act as the fiscal agent for the Blue Ridge Regional Jail Authority Special Education Program.
Okay, thank you for your motion, Dr. Carter, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Morrison, for the second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and we have now approved all of our fiscal agent responsibilities. And now we'll move to J thirteen with our fiscal policy updates. And you have that before you, this is for discussion tonight, Dr. Edwards.
That's right, so this is on for first read. It'll be on the next month's board agenda for final approval. There were two policies that the fiscal group reviewed. One is the employee expense regulations, and the other is student fines. And just real quickly, on the employee expense reimbursements, I'm sorry, not regulations, there are a couple things. We did some name changes in adding the correct name of the Director of Finance and Operations when that position is filled, and also updating the website where you can find the travel guidelines. And Ms. Lakonic reminded me of a couple other ones that you don't see on your, on your copy, but I wanted her to mention it tonight for discussion. And that way, when we bring it back to you for final approval, we can update and make sure we have those corrections as well.
Okay, I apologize, I did not notice this previously, but when I was cross-referencing under item, section B for the required travel forms, the request to attend conference form and the request for reimbursement form says it can be found on LCS Commons under Finance. They're actually located under the Travel tab, so we were going to change those two. Also, the Grant Pre-Approval Form was worded a little bit differently. It says Grant Approval Purchase Form, so we're going to, we're going to make those names match. And the other suggestion was under D, item one, where it states in the second line, indicated on the form for his or her consideration, we were recommending to change that to their.
Thank you for bringing those matters to our attention, Ms. Lakonic. Each board member will govern themselves accordingly. Is there any discussion relative to this information brought to us tonight? If not, thank you so much, Ms. Lakonic. We will now go to J fourteen, Instruction and Program Policy Updates, Dr. Edwards.
Okey-dokey, and there were several policies of V S B A and L C S review, and a new policy, and Ms. Bond Gentry has popped back in, because I did not sit on this one, for updates.
Okay, the policy committee met, and we are recommending to the board new and updated policies from the Virginia School Board Association, the V S B A. The first one is regarding to policy E B B, which was threat assessments, and it was just updated to the current V S B A format and language. The second is L C S policy J B A, which is the Section 504 nondiscrimination and complaint process. And in that one, we simply took out the actual Director of Special Education's name, deleted that, and replaced it with a title, and then an email address, which is linked directly to the Director of Special Education for complaints in regard to this policy. The last one is the L C S policy, which is new. It is an I K C Z, which was created by the policy team, and it outlines the process for granting a student's family, parent, or guardian a diploma or a proclamation should a student pass away during their academic years. At this time, if we'd like, if you have questions or recommendations for the committee to hear, we'd be glad to hear.
Thank you, and any board member have a question for, regarding the Instruction and Program Policy Updates?
Do we want to put these on the consent agenda?
There has been a request from the School Board Member Carter to place this on the consent agenda for our November meeting. Obviously, it can be pulled if necessary. If I don't hear any objection, that is a consideration which we will honor. Any further questions or thoughts on this matter? Thank all of you for your fine work on that and for bringing to us for discussion on tonight. Thank you so much. All right, this brings us to the last matter of our new business discussion, and we certainly are grateful to Dr. Jordan and all her great work. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely, so you heard earlier that we had held on purchasing textbooks in the spring because we didn't know when we would have children. We didn't know the status of the schools when the governor first closed. We didn't know if textbook money would be available to be used for something else, so we were being extremely cautious with our pennies. And now that we are definitely in the flow of education and bringing kids back, we want to revisit our need for textbooks. So Dr. Jordan is going to just give you a quick update on what the committee has recommended for English.
We've heard part of this item for... Information back in March where we talked to you about the age of our secondary textbooks. They are almost twenty years old. Because of COVID and our reliance on technology, and even when we're going back to hybrid, we're going to have three days of remote instruction, the need for a digital secondary option is very apparent. We are dancing around, you know, the use of novels that are falling apart, short stories, and a digital textbook option would open so many doors for us. So I'm bringing just the secondary portion to you this month, and you heard about the textbook restricted funds. You'll hear more about K five next month, and we'll bring forward some other textbook purchases. But I think our textbooks have been on hold for decades, and now there really is a need to have a digital option. We are not going to explore as many print, like, class sets or consumables at this point, because that may not be the safest thing to do. So we're going to do the digital option first, and then phase in some paper consumables and class sets as we feel like that is safe. We've been going back and forth with Dr. Gaetle. He's probably tired of some of our emails, but we ask, what about library books? And he'll say, the guidance this week is, and then he'll send us the latest study. So we want to make sure that we're being safe even with our resources. So I'm bringing to you Secondary English through H M H, and it's called Into Literature. And we would like your approval to adopt this series so we can purchase some digital resources for our secondary students.
Dr. Jordan, this board would like to thank you for the way in which you have been moving through this and doing things at the appropriate time. And so this is being brought before the board tonight. What is the pleasure of the board, Dr. Brennan?
Since the board has discussed this already in a nice presentation previously, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the adoption of the secondary textbook proposal. Dr. Jordan, you probably can't see this in front of you, but the last sentence is, I think it's a little bit, I think it's just a typo. The last sentence says, "The secondary recommendation is pointing up in the heart," I think it applies to maybe the secondary textbook adoption recommendation. I think it's your first recommendation to have them do it. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
Okay.
With the language that Dr. Brennan just stated, we have a motion on the floor. Is there one willing to second that motion? Ms. Morrison, thank you for your second. Any questions or discussion regarding this motion? Dr. Nellis?
What costs are we looking at? This initial phase is just for electronic or digital?
We were looking at, originally, we were looking at a seven-year purchase with digital and consumables and class sets. That was going to be a little shy of a million. So that was going to be nine hundred thousand, and now we're looking at something roughly five hundred and fifty thousand for digital access for seven years with a component that is specifically for writing. So access to digital, thousands of digital novels and short stories, but not the consumable purchase at this time.
So this is, I don't know, a subscription kind of service for a library collection?
It would be similar to a library subscription if we stick to just the digital purchase.
Further questions? Hearing none, we will call for the vote. All those in favor of the language that is used for secondary textbook recommendation? If you're in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you so much, Dr. Jordan.
Thank you. I'll be back.
All right. Thank you all. We have covered quite a bit in this meeting, and we now move towards item K. One. Superintendent comments?
Okay, I'm gonna try to keep them brief, but I do have a, a couple things that I need to get out. First, I'd like to thank Jody Gillette, Ed Foundation, and Strubantz Foundation for an outstanding surprise through the community presentation for the Strubantz Award for our Dunbar Middle School student Renaya Russell on September twenty-fifth. I know her principal had a wonderful time driving through the city trying to find her and surprise her, but it was such a, a great experience to surprise her with a full, well, not a full, but a fifteen thousand dollar scholarship on behalf of the Strubantz Foundation, which we do say thank you for those wonderful things for our students, and to the Ed Foundation for working with us and working with them to make that happen. Also, on celebratory things, the V S B A also hands out wonderful certificates of recognition and pins for when board members do professional development. And I know our staff has been doing a lot of professional development, and so has our school board. So I have various recognitions that I would like to pass out tonight. I'm gonna send them that way. So a certificate of recognition goes to Ms. Bell Evans for her fifteen credits that she earned this year. For Dr. Brennan, we have a, not only the fifteen credits, but also a silver award for forty-eight credits. Mrs. Morrison has also earned both a certificate and a silver award. Congratulations. And Dr. Carter has earned a certificate and sixty-six credits in two years, which is a gold award. And Dr. Coleman has earned his certificate. Plus, it says a starfish award, and the starfish is better than silver, bronze, and gold, and it's for distinction, distinction in eighty-four credits of professional development. On this side of the room, we have Mr. Harvey, who has earned his certificate plus twenty-four with a bronze, and that's in his first year. Thank you, thank you. Dr. Gupta has also earned a certificate of recognition. And I'm gonna just slide those down to Dr. Nillis. Dr. Senha has earned her certificate plus twenty-four credits with a bronze pin. And then last but not least, Dr. Nillis has earned fifteen credits with a certificate of recognition. And that is each and every board member has participated in some high-quality P. D., which is on our strategic plan that you do that, so I do want to congratulate each of you with that. Couple of quick public announcements. On November seventeenth, we are having our work session on a discussion about our M. O. U. with the Police Department. Every two years, we get together, review it, and sign it. So that will be on our November seventeenth work session. But prior to that, on October twenty-second, Ms. Brown and I are going to host by Zoom. We're putting this together, a public input discussion, question and answer about our M. O. U. So we will be posting our M. O. U. and having a Zoom invite, and I believe we can only have a hundred people, so we'll have to work out that, but people can also send us questions. So we want to do that in advance of our work session, so we get input from the public regarding our M. O. U. Also, on November seventeenth, we will, once we're done with our work session, we're gonna have our public budget hearing for input purposes. So we are at the start of developing the new budget for next school year, and we would like to hear from the public, as we did last year, a little differently because of COVID. But we want to know, what are your budget priorities? What are the things that you think the board should be considering as the board develops their budget? You heard tonight some of the budget priorities. I will tell you the salary guide and pay schedules that we started two years ago and put in place are a high priority for things that we are doing moving forward. So that will also be on November seventeenth. I will say with our little ones coming back today, pre-K to two, that keeps us in phase two in terms of schools. But next week, when the third through sixth graders come back, fourth, fifth, and sixth, I'm gonna kick us into a pseudo-phase three, which is very good. So as we move into phase three in our academic realm, we also move into phase three in our athletics and extracurricular realm, and a lot of you have been following V. H. S. L. We have an outstanding team that has worked on our athletics and extracurricular subcommittee pod. They have expanded now that we're moving towards phase three to, to add the, in sport. At this point, we're starting with high school sports. Our A. D.s, our principals are also very active. Had a wonderful meeting with them. And our message to, to our community is, in addition to the awesome academics that we provide our students, we have wonderful extracurricular programs. We have outstanding athletic programs. And your coaches want you to know that they want you here. And so for our kids, I know you, you know, you're itching to get back to school. You're itching to get back to competitive play, and I know V. H. S. S. L. has put out a schedule where they've modified seasons, but I do want you to know that Lynchburg City Schools is supporting the well-rounded development of our children. So you will hear some of the wonderfully creative strategies and mitigations. And you heard a little bit about, one of our students said she's practicing with a mask on, or she's conditioning with a mask on. We'll be talking more about that, but I just wanted to send that shout out to my students and staff. And the month of October, actually starting in September, is a lot of celebration. So from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, we are right smack in the mid of Hispanic Heritage Month, and we like to celebrate all of our, our colleagues and our students and our families during this time. It was also on October second, National Custodial Worker Day, and I will tell you, our custodial staff is working very, very, very hard, so we appreciate everything that they're doing. October happens to be Disability Awareness Month, and we, you know, we'll, we usually have a presentation from our special ed advisory committee. They're gonna do one later on. It's Farm to School Month as well. It's School Bus Safety Month. It's also LGBTQ History Month and Bullying Prevention Month. All of those things I mentioned because those are all things that we subscribe and support here in our Lynchburg City Schools family as we strive to be an inclusive, inviting, warm, welcoming educational system. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, for your outstanding work. This brings us to L., which is item L., which is our board comments, and I'll start with Ms. Evans.
I, I think I said everything during the return to learn section.
Okay, Ms. Morrison?
Good.
Dr. Carter?
Just again, want to thank LCS family for all that, that is done and being done for the safe educational environment of our students. And I'm just happy to see the two student representatives tonight from the schools. I think they're gonna be awesome. And they give you a perspective that they know, and, and they're witnessing and doing. And also, today's the National Night Out Against Crime.
Very well said. Thank you for that. Dr. Brennan?
So I'd just like to echo what Ms. Evans, how the board members have said about what a great job the teachers and the staff have done with, with Dr. Edwards' blessing. I've had the opportunity to visit all the elementary schools, and it's just phenomenal what the work they've done, what the mitigation plan is. I also had the opportunity to visit Bedford Hill School this morning and Lincoln Elementary. It was great to see those kids coming off the buses. I'm not the crying type, but it was still fun to watch them come. It was really neat. And I just want to do a shout out to the, to the Communications Department. We talked about communications last time. I think over the last month, I think for months, they've done a great job. I think particularly the last month with their blast, they've been talking about what the options are for learning. They've talked about the mask policy. They put out a great video. We now have the number of cases on the website. All that has been put out to the community to hear and see, so I think much congratulations and thank them for what they've done.
Thank you. Dr. Nillis? Dr. Senha? Dr. Gupta? Mr. Harvey? All right, I'd like to end briefly, moving us forward with a few statements. First of all, on behalf of the Virginia School Boards Association and our board, we would like to present this certificate to Dr. Crystal Edwards, which is a certificate, award of achievement, that is being presented to her for your commitment to effective school board governance, through your participation in the V. S. B. A. School Board Academy two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and for being a rising star amongst leaders within our association.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also would like to just briefly indicate some of the activity of the chair. We have been sending out letters of encouragement to each principal. This board was fully participatory in introducing our superintendent at the city council meeting on September the twenty-second. The Strubantz Scholarship revealed, had a chance to participate on that as a part of the board, as well as appearances on W. L. N. I., countless meetings with our vice chair, completing the superintendent evaluation process, agenda prep meetings with the superintendent even after the meeting regarding matters concerning the board and bringing your concerns to the superintendent. We have engaged with meetings prior to with our student reps that you were able to hear today regarding their duties and meeting protocols, and to let them know about Susan Morrison's goodies that would be provided at the meetings, and other interests regarding upgrading of our policy. Phone meetings with Attorney Towns, meeting with the board clerk regarding template for meetings and minutes and other correspondences. We've had the opportunity to participate with Dr. Edwards and the Director of our Ed Foundation, as well as the Executive Director. I've instituted an update from the chair, and I do plan on getting that regularly. My father's hospitalization has delayed that this most recent week. Attended Finance Committee meetings, V. H. S. L. Executive Committee meetings, governance team training that we had September the eighteenth. Participated in the Legislative Advocacy Seminar, which I thought Ms. Morrison and others was really, really good. Collective bargaining for your information was really excellent, and I will govern myself accordingly. Wrote letters to approve various sessions for the superintendent regarding things that she needs to be involved in. Phone calls, responding concerns on behalf of the board, attending community virtual events such as Unity in Our Community, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, some of which with Dr. Edwards. Safe Schools Online Training, reviewing our Virginia Code on some matters we will discuss later. Preparing for the V. S. B. A. Delegate Assembly, preparing for the Southern Region Meeting on October the twenty-seventh, and our virtual annual conference coming up on November the eighteen through the twentieth. You should also be receiving some information and reports from the V. S. B. A., and I did not want anyone to be surprised when you see that report that is coming forward. This year, I've had the privilege of serving on the board as the Chair of the Federal Relations and Legislative Advocacy Committee, and it is the will of that board to move me from doing that to being the, watch this, Gary, the Finance and Audit Chair for the Virginia School Board Association so that I could gain knowledge in that particular area that now puts me on the Executive Committee of V. S. B. A. And so I just wanted to make sure that you are familiar with that. Are there any additional statements from the board? If not, item M, the additional items and comments. The Next Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee will be October the thirteenth. Thank you for your great leadership, Ms. Evans. The school board work session will be on Tuesday, October the twentieth, and you already know the items that will be presented for that. The Next Finance Committee meeting, as was stated earlier, is Tuesday, August, October the twenty-seventh. Thank you, Mr. Harvey, for your leadership. And that now moves us to item N for adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
And properly seconded, hearing no questions or discussions? Yes, 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 yes. Meeting adjourned.